I'll call the meeting to order.
Quickly.
Okay, everybody.
Yeah. We're not quite sure what-
In case we owe anybody any money for that, that was not a-
Our advertisement, it was an accident.
Not, that is-
It's officially not on the air.
Okay, we're calling- Calling the meeting to order. Please call the roll. Mr. Haney is here.
Yes, I am. I'm very here tonight.
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
All right, let's rock and roll.
Let's rise and Brian, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. One, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us hope our leaders in Washington DC start doing a little better job on that liberty for everybody.
Do we need to, Mayor, show everyone where the exits are in the event of an earthquake?
I don't think so.
Well, I'm going under my desk.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes?
Nope.
Hearing none. The agenda is approved. We have a presentation this evening, a poster celebrating Ventura County.
Oh, that's you.
Hello.
Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me here today. I'm so excited to announce the 144th edition of the Ventura County Fair. Opens on July 31st and runs through August 11th. We've got great fun for everybody. There's concerts, rodeos, free with fair admission. And I'll just run through really quickly for you, the concerts this year. We're having an opening night concert, and that's Sticks. That's on July 31st. Martina McBride is on August 1st, Melissa Etheridge on August 2nd. On August 3rd, it's Saturday night with the Ohio Players, Evelyn Champagne King and the Emotions. And on Sunday, August 4th, we've got Dia de la Familia, and it's featuring Banda Carnaval, Luis Coronel, and Cuarto de Mia. That's at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. On Monday, August 5th, it's the Ex-Ambassadors. On Tuesday, August 6th, we have two concerts in the afternoon at 1 o'clock. It's Tommy James and the Shondells. And in the evening, it's Brothers Osborne at 7:30. On Wednesday, Daughtry is performing at 7:30. Thursday, August 8th, is Military Appreciation Day, and the concert that night is George Thoroughgood and the Destroyers. And they're doing their Good to Be Bad Tour, 45 years of rock. It should be a great concert.
Add to the bonus.
Collective Soul is the last concert on Friday, the 9th. And then Saturday and Sunday, the 10th and the 11th, we have free rodeo shows at 2:00 and 7:00 PM. There's a lot of promotions that people can get in for low admission or for free. On Wednesday is Dollar Day. It's a dollar till 3:00. On Thursday is Feed the Need Food Drive, and it's to benefit food share. And people bring in five cans of food, and they get a return ticket to the fair. So they help out the community, and they get a little bit of a bonus for doing that. Youth Day is on Friday, August 2nd. Children under 12 get in for free. And seniors and persons with disabilities on Tuesday, August 6th, get in free all day. Three Before Three Day is Wednesday, August 7th. It's $3 until 3:00. Military Appreciation Day is on Thursday, August 8th. Military get in for free all day in honor of your service. We have a livestock auction on Friday. It's a big event. The kids from around the county have spent the year raising animals to learn how to market. And the fair is all about agriculture. We strive to educate the community about agriculture. So we urge you to bring your friends on down, talk to the kids, ask them how they've raised their animals and what their career plans are. It's all interesting. It's all fun. And with that, I'd like to introduce you to our poster. This year was our 10th annual poster contest for children in grades 5 through 12. We had 58 entries this year. And yesterday, we actually presented the winner, and here is the winner of our poster. It's an 18-year-old artist from Santa Paula, Dariana Vasquez. And she did this in colored pencil, and-
Really? Well, not gorgeous.
If you have a chance and you can look at the detail, you'll be astounded. All of the entries were beautiful.
Summertime.
Summertime. Weather is fine.
And I don't know how they chose, out of 58, every one of them was a winner, in my opinion. But I give you the poster, and thank you for having me. And everybody come on out and enjoy the fair. It's a country fair with Ocean Air. And we're looking forward to seeing you all there.
Thank you, Derek.
And good night, everybody.
You're a rapper. Keep it going. Thank you.
That was good, though.
Okay, we are, let's get back to the agenda here. Presentation, we go to the consent calendar.
Who to approve?
Second, I'll second.
Okay, there's motion to approve in a second. Seeing no, or hearing no objection.
So ordered.
Boy, that's real. Two pages. That's pretty good.
Two plus.
Lot of reading.
Okay, discussion, road rehabilitation project. Mr. City Manager, number two.
Yes, and Public Works Director Greg Grant is actually going to take us through the road rehabilitation project.
Hi, Greg.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think as review, a quick review of the administrative report. We are doing our, every two years, otherwise known as a biannual paving project. So this has been laid out previously. We went through the pavement condition index and prioritized our streets. And we adopted, council, I should say, adopted in 2017, a multi-year priority plan. That was what this list of streets to be paved is based on. We did pull a few streets from that plan in cooperation with the Casitas Municipal Water District. It was reviewed with council in April. And that's, they're moving along quickly on their whole bond program to start doing the water line improvements. So we've got good coordination with them at this point. So we have that in the paving program with the list of streets on page two of the administrative report. And attached to the report was the map, which shows that as well. The additional items we lumped in with the project for efficiency, for lower pricing, while we have a paving contractor up here, is the lower Libby parking lot paving improvements. I'd be glad to go over those in more detail. But essentially, the lot, the drive-through section of the lot, when you come off of Montgomery on either side and drive-through is heavily deteriorated. So that needs to be milled or grinded out and replaced with new pavement. We did a few complete street and stormwater improvements by adding some tree planters, as well as a long bioswale pocket in there. But the southern, I guess it'd be kind of the southeastern half of the parking lot is in much better condition. So that was not included in that paving project. Our own crew can do that with a slurry trailer and crack filler and so on that was approved by council.
Our new hot crack filler.
The new hot crick, that's right. Hot AC and hot crack fill. So we, our crew can handle that and really upgrade that part of the parking lot as well. Additionally, the public works, the upper yard is in bad condition. We had some grants from TDA to improve that upper yard, combined with money we get through the Solid Waste Franchise Agreement for impacts to that yard. And so that would repave that and also make it ADA compliant. We don't have an ADA space at this time, a proper one. That'll make it proper. It also has a trolley wash pad improvement, recapture that and put it through a modern LID improvement for stormwater capture and with any overflow going to the sewer system. We have complete streets components included up front this time as well. And that includes on South Montgomery Street, a sidewalk fix. I think people are familiar with between Agave and Emporium. We've got that extreme cross slope on the sidewalk out there. It really continues all the way up to the nest, and it goes as far south as Wachters. So that is difficult. The upper side where the sidewalk matches the entry to these establishments, as well as the sidewalks, is very high. The curb is very low. So the one way to fix it is to push the curb out into the street. Gives it more room, and we can correct the sidewalk and make the slope proper. And that also preserves the older oak tree that's kind of there at the corner between Agave, Maria, and Emporium. So it's one of, and that also at the same time, it's really probably become one of the higher-use areas. I think we all agree. And it narrows and squeezes the street a bit to help improve pedestrian, bike, and car safety altogether. People are going to have to maneuver through there a little more carefully. It creates two 10-foot lanes, two 7-foot parking lanes. The parking lanes are 7-foot right now, but there's a very wide drive-through lanes. We've reviewed that with the owners in that area, the business owners, and reviewed it with them as well. The next item was the Rincon Street. That's the primary place we saw an opportunity to add a sidewalk. So on Rincon, from where the restaurant is, correct me, feel free to correct me on that restaurant. It's Nacola, Nicole, I don't know how you say it, but-
Chola.
Nacola, alright, so Nacola. They have a sidewalk out front with a reasonably updated curb ramp. So minor improvement to the curb ramps, just putting truncated domes on. But their sidewalk extends to the back parking lot, so we'd pick it up there and take it all the way up to Aliso Street. And we'd have some curb extensions on the intersection of, that would be Matilla House Street and Rincon. The, otherwise, any adjacent curb ramps that are significantly out of code are being updated along the paving job. And we're taking wider diameter, or wider radius curb ramps, corners, and tightening those up. So it's a complete street improvement where you can't whip around the corner. You've got to slow down and carefully make that a sharper corner. I think that is, in general, the improvements we're talking about. We have $1.43 million budgeted for this, all these improvements. Primarily Fund 30, it is all Fund 31 with some grant funding primarily for the Public Works Yard Parking Lot grant and also Solid Waste Franchise Agreement. And I guess I hear some interest tonight. We do have the plans available for review. We also have the bid documents for review as well, up on the screen if there's questions.
And council, have any questions or staff before we take public comment? Yeah, Bill.
A couple, you know, I have other comments later on, but I have a couple questions for clarification right now. Limited to that. In the past, we've had significant change orders due to unforeseen conditions. And I noticed a contrast in the bid documents on Section 1-4, Instructions to Bitter. It says that the bidder is supposed to make or obtain any additional examinations, investigations, explorations, test studies, and any additional information and data which pertain to fiscal conditions, et cetera, et cetera. In other words, they're responsible. But I also note that on page 54 of the site conditions, in 4.3A, there's a lot of language about, well, change orders are due to conditions that aren't, are outside of what's foreseen or expected. There seems to be a conflict here. Where in the one section of the bid documents, we make it very clear that they're supposed to be requiring to know the subsurface conditions, and that's their responsibility. And yet, we've had significant change orders which seem to, you know, respond to this other section of the bid documents where we're giving additional money for their claims of not knowing what was under the street. I'm having trouble reconciling those two.
Okay, I think there's reasonable industry standards on what's acceptable. Contractors understand when they grind asphalt that, what asphalt's made out of and how difficult it is to grind it, and you might hit occasional concrete and so on. They have, I think it's within reason, I think last time we had, in the 2017 paving program, we added a lot of complete streets measures. We added Mallory Street. We added quite a few significant items that weren't in-
We also had a change order for the base not being adequate.
Right.
That, why isn't that included in this responsibility of the bidder to know what the physical conditions are, the subsurface conditions are?
You know, we didn't do a full soils report. We did some coring, which we're adding-
My question is, why isn't the bidder responsible? This, this language says the bidder is responsible for determining that.
I think it goes back to that industry standard, when it's reasonable that they should have anticipated it, and they might be heading, for instance, if you had to do a corner ramp, and you excavate, and you hit some extreme conditions, there might be, I don't know, some giant boulders and so on. Within reason, we feel that's part of the work. But we don't expect them to deal with some extreme conditions. If it is, we generally are open to change orders to deal with that.
It just seemed to be a contradiction in terms of the language justifying change order from this statement of responsibility for subsurface conditions being entirely the bidder's.
Right. I think it's kind of an industry standard to have that, to make sure the contractor is aware, inspects the job, and knows what it is. But we don't expect them to go out and start, you know, pulling up our streets and find out what's underneath it. So, within reason, I think-
Well, there's also language in here where they're supposed to go out and core and repair cores as part of their bidding process.
Okay. I'm actually, didn't anticipate that, so it might be standard language that's buried in there.
Okay. Well, it's just something I wanted to ask about in terms of clarity.
Okay.
Bill, could I ask, can I interject something just in this time? Because it goes through the same thought process. When we say standards, we've got standards today in paving, parking lots, and streets, and things of that nature. But we're repairing streets that are how many years old?
A lot of the streets haven't touched 30 years.
So are we expecting those contractors to understand that maybe those paving standards are not the same today as they were 60, or 70, or 80 years ago?
I mean, we do-
That's what I'm trying, so if we're speculating in today's standards, let's say 6 inches of class 2 base and 4 inches of, you know, whatever the asphalt's called, that's today's standard. The old standards might have been 2 inches of base and 2 and 1/2 inches or 2 inches of asphalt.
Or native soil, right.
Right.
Yeah. And so, really-
So the coring seems like it's a pretty important part of their bid.
You know, we've done the coring now, and we're actually adding a chart which has it. It isn't, we already have specified the design, which says mill 1 and 1/2 deep, place inch and a half in rubber. So it's really an overlay. It's a top treatment. So we're not going and replacing a full road section. We're not requiring them to warranty structurally damaged roads. We have a lot of truck traffic and have, that's typically handled by the design up front. So in this case, we are, we have the standard design, and they need to follow it. And it's, I think what happened up there and before, Mallory was very strange, 2 to 3 inches of asphalt on original native clay type material, terrible conditions. And then Blanch also, we saw serious determin-
Well, going back to the coring aspect of it, just in general common sense, it seems like that we'd be gathering historic information regarding our streets by having, every time that we do an overlay, by having someone coring it and coming back to you and saying, "By the way, our coring sample showed 2 and 1/2 asphalt, 2 and 1/2 base and native soil." So you may be thinking down the road that instead of doing an overlay, you may at some time have to pull this whole street up and actually rebase it and, you know, bring it up to today's standards.
Right.
That's where I see the benefit in the coring.
Yeah.
And if it's a part of our contract, I would say have them do it and keep the information.
So at this point, just, we have coring, and our primary concern is when you mill inch and a half. There was, petrimat was commonly used material back 25 years ago. You know, it was a layer of fabric that was put in to reinforce the overlay. And when they mill at inch and a half, sometimes that material will get caught up into the milling. And some of the ranches that like this materials for road surfacing don't like all that debris in there. So it costs them a lot more money. So a lot of our milling is based on that. We also have an issue when you mill, if the overlay went down an inch and a half or more, if it was an undulating road, you land up with sort of pancakes of asphalt left that are not adhered well to this previous lay road. So that's where, that's primarily what we're focused on with the coring and so on.
I didn't mean to take this long. I just wanted to, you know, it was very clear in one section that they're responsible for subsurface conditions, not clear elsewhere.
Okay.
Second, quick question I have.
Okay, yeah, why don't we just make them questions so we can then get public comment, and then when we bring it back for deliberation, we can get into the more detail.
Last year, after, when we had the rains, they demobilized and took like, what, a month or so to remobilize?
Right.
Were there any liquidated damages paid last year?
No.
So we, the time after it stopped raining, we just allowed them to, we waited for a while before we told them to remobilize.
They did the substantial completion, which was the paving. They didn't do a lot of the extra work that we had requested, like curb extensions at the bike path and so on.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I didn't get to ask my question. Sorry. Do I get to ask it?
All you have to do is ask, and then you-
So first of all, thank you. This is a very thorough report, and I especially appreciated how you addressed Councilmember Wyrick's concerns. I actually found it very interesting. But my main concern is that, about the curb extensions. I want absolute assurance that you are out there on your bicycle before you do those, and that you double-check how, when you're on your bike during peak traffic especially, how that affects, whether those curb extensions put you in the car travel lane. That's what I would like for you to double-check on.
And if it's possible, I'd like to meet with you, because I just heard some of those concerns, and I'd like you to show how the curb extensions we've done, we have considered that carefully and how it integrates in the bike, because I understand your concerns.
Okay, I'll be happy to be with you. Thank you.
So Mayor, can I follow up on that just real quick? It's a simple statement. So remember what Suzie just asked you to do, to get on a bike and put your life in danger. Just, I just want to clarify that.
I was going to pull him aside afterwards and said I don't encourage that.
Notice how she's-
Well, if that's the feeling you get, then it's, then something's wrong. Yeah.
Right.
I mean, seriously.
Sure.
And if the Public Works Director does not return from this mission, is that covered in the contract for a delay?
Yeah, is that bike registered with the city?
I have, I have one card here, Russell Sidney. Russell, you want to-
We just bought $15,000 with the 100 bikes, so.
Thank you, council members and staff. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this worthy project. The staff report shows six streets being paved immediately adjacent to Topa Topa Elementary. These would be essential to creating safe bicycle routes to that school. There is one street that is potentially important to safe parallel bicycle routes to the northeastern part of the city. The report also identifies three complete streets components. There are, however, no references to bicycle safety concerns with any part of the project. Worse yet, the complete streets portion includes curb extensions without addressing the relative bicycle safety issues. The recent curb extensions added to the street improvements have actually created potential serious cycling hazards, which I believe is why Suzie brings it up. The community has shown strong ongoing support for creating safe routes to school, particularly getting to Topa Topa students to school safely on bicycles. Chief Freihoff has shown one safe way involving large numbers of supervising adults and a police escort. The other way is to add safety features to the school's routes and to train the students on safe riding practices over enhanced routes. The need to add safety features based on safe routes to school plan was presented to the Complete Streets Committee over two years ago. The concern came up about the ATP grant. A presentation about the safety features needed to create safe routes was provided to the last Complete Streets Meeting. The planning commissioners at that meeting were not clear if the Safe Streets Committee or the Planning Commission has a role to play in creating that plan. The result is, there is no plan for creating safe routes to school. Similarly, safe parallel route plans are not available either. If bicycle safety is a priority for this council, would it be possible to get directions to create those plans with priority given to the locations being impacted by the paving plan and by the ATP grant? You folks would know the best procedure to get that done. It would have been great to have that before we got into this paving project. The, the safety hazards that are created with good intentions can be potentially libelous. The curb outs could cause bicycles to hit those curbs and end up in the hospital. Worse yet, they can hit those curbs and go under a car or into a car that they're trying to swerve to avoid. We're talking about injury and hospitalization if they go under the car. We're talking about wrongful death liabilities being involved. Are the curb extensions on the complete streets portion going to create these issues? Do they conform to Caltrans standards with extensions of no more than 6 feet with 11-foot wide lanes? What would be the correct procedure to make sure that we get these specifications done correctly? Would it involve the Complete Streets Committee, the Planning Commission, or who? Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Russell. Okay, that's the only card I have. Mr. City Manager, what is the direction needed from the council, simply to approve to, to project to bid? Is it, is it accurate to say that these things are component? When it says component, it means that they're separate packages and that, and some of this can be dealt with over the next month or two?
Yes.
Right, and that's one of the directions I wanted to go, put something up for us to look at.
Okay.
I was wondering if we could have, in terms of, is that a right to you, buddy?
Yeah.
I had some questions about some particular components. And I was wondering if we could show page 30 and 31 of the project sheets.
Bill, before you continue, just one minute. Mr. City Attorney, we have a published special meeting that was at 7:15.
Let's do that, yeah.
Should we?
You don't have to take that up now. 7:15 is the minimum, the minimum start time, but you can take it up now if you wish.
But we also have public comment at 7:30. Let's wait.
We can, I can wait on all of it.
But let's wait on the special meeting. Let's get as much done as we can until at least 7:30, don't you think?
And we're not, we only have three minutes, so there won't be a whole lot of that.
Yeah, I think we ought to just go to public comment. Let's just continue this item and-
Mayor, why don't, why don't we do public comment? I don't know if we have any cards yet.
Six.
And we can do that, and then we can go.
And that would council's preference.
Fine, with your code.
It sounded better when it was zero.
Yeah.
Yeah, it did.
And two for the-
Well, nine, that's up to you.
And two for the special meeting.
Okay. So it is the council's preference that we do public comment first?
Right.
Okay. Ron, Ron the librarian.
Right. Thank you so much, members of council. My name is Ron Solorsano. I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. And I wanted to come out here to just give you guys a quick summer update for the library. First thing I wanted to mention, I'm really, really happy to do, it's the introduction of our new official youth librarian over at the Ojai Library. We have officially hired Courtney Lerner as our youth librarian. Courtney most recently was working at the Ojai Library as one of our technicians. She has been promoted, very much deserved. Courtney holds a master's degree in library and information science from San Jose State University, and received undergraduate degrees from Evergreen State College in Liberal Arts and California State University Northridge in K-12 education. So she's a wonderful addition to our team. The community loves her. I've seen her at work. She's just, she's amazing with children, with families. It's, we couldn't be happier to have her on board. Next up, I want to mention, summer reading is well underway. You know, kids are signing up, getting their minutes in, picking up their prizes. It's wonderful. Coming up this weekend, on Saturday, July 13th, 1:00 PM, we're going to have a special summer reading event. The magician Sean McMaster is going to come and just do a little magic show for, for everyone. So if you're able to, stop on by.
What was the date on that?
It's going to be Saturday, July 13th, so this coming Saturday, 1:00 PM. In addition to that, we're also still gearing up for our One County, One Book Program, which is going to be featured in October. We're going to have activities, programs, and discussions surrounding Susan Orleans' book, The Library Book, which she will actually be here in Ventura County on November 2nd to speak as well. So look for more information on that on our website and coming up soon. I also wanted to mention, we had, I don't know if you saw us at the July 4th parade, but the community came together at the library to construct a wearable puppet. It was a big owl with big wings, and we had little kids design wings of their own to run around with it, and we just had a blast. It was a lot of fun. And, you know, that's pretty much, you know, pretty much it. Summer's going along. It's getting hotter. We're, you know, we're staying cool in the library. And the last thing I wanted to mention, if any of you has a chance, if you haven't already, swing by the library and have a look at our front patio. We've managed to get a couple of really significant improvements out there. Got a little bit of new paint, a little bit of new stucco, and honestly, it's, it's almost like a whole new building. So happy to say that, and if you ever have any questions, just come by and let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Linda? With Jack Weber on deck?
That was Linda Purpos.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm here with Paul Jorgensen, and we came out because we were hoping to provide you with some information related to our home at- with some information related to our home at two oh two Chico Road. We're located in the Arbolata. In a nutshell, we recently were informed that there was a complaint associated with a fence that we had built, and we were hoping to come here and provide you with some information on that fence, particularly associated, may I bring some materials up? Particularly associated with what we identified as, as what, what caused us to want to build the fence in the first place, but also with the process that we took for designing and building the fence. And I think there was one other thing. And then the special elements that we incorporated into our fence. So in this handout that I just provided to you, it shows our location here on the corner, and we have five stop signs that are in the direct proximity of our home. And when we moved in, in two thousand twelve, we were very surprised to find how busy of a road that is. Basically, the, the road that, that comes in and around our property provides an alternate route for, for locals to bypass the traffic in, in downtown. So, so we get quite a bit of traffic there. We also found that as the cars were stopping at, at two of the streets, their headlights were directly shooting into our home. So as they turned around the corner, we had, we, we basically got this disco ball effect in our home at nighttime. You'd get up in the middle of the night and, and lights would be flashing everywhere, and, and it, it, it was quite a nuisance. So we, we researched the municipal code to see what we were entitled to do on our property. We, based on that research, we did find, and I'd like to point out, that being on a corner property, section ten dash two point three six oh two identifies that the front lot line on a corner is aligned with the shortest, shortest frontage. So given the, the diagram I just passed around, we determined that our front yard or front lot line is actually on Palomar, and that, that provides for some differentiation with, with what we can do with the fencing on our side lot. We then, after we came up with a design and a plan, we came into the city. We're, we're responsible citizens. We've got a history of permitting activity with the city. We, we did not pursue this without looking into the information in advance, making sure that whatever we were doing was consistent with, with the city guidelines. So, so we brought our...
Now I'm going to have to have you bring this to, and I should have reminded everybody under public comment, it's three minutes.
I, I apologize.
No, that's okay.
I do have photos in here. I, I hope that you'll take some time to look. We did incorporate wildlife access into our fence. It's basically just a screen. It's open ended on both ends. It has a fourteen inch clearance on the bottom and four pass-throughs.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I have one, I have one question for you.
Yeah, I do too.
Just simply, what are you asking for?
We are not asking for anything at this time. We assert that our fence is in compliance with the code. We're concerned that there was this complaint filed, and we were hoping to get ahead of it by, by providing this information to you. We feel that we really addressed a nuisance we were dealing with, and, and building this fence has resulted in enhancing the quality of our life at home.
Okay, and we'll refer this to staff to be aware of this.
And I have met with staff.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something? You know, this is, you're speaking under unscheduled items, but you, I don't know if you know that it's on the agenda tonight, the topic. So if you stay, some of your concerns may be addressed.
Okay.
That's all, you know, just want to make sure that you know that it's on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much.
The topic of fences and hedges is on the agenda, whether or not it'll address your particular issue, but the staff is now well aware that apparently a complaint has been filed. You believe you're within the law. They will certainly take that into consideration. They would anyway, but I, I appreciate you highlighting it in advance, okay?
Thank you, and, and I hope that you can take a few looks at our pictures to see, to see what we're reviewing.
Yeah. Okay, Jack Weber, and is it Myra Love is on deck.
Hi, council members, good to see you again. Since the last time we gathered, it was a couple of weeks ago, New York City has declared climate emergency. Tonight, I'm going to give you a little bit more information for why declaring climate emergency is so important. When asking for climate emergency, we're responding to cutting-edge scientific consensus. The international, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, what's called the IPCC, is the world's authority on climate science. Last year, this group gave us twelve years to save ourselves from catastrophe. To do so, however, we must muster an unprecedented level of cooperation, extraordinary speed, and heroic scale of action, according to a Nobel Prize-winning chemist named Mario Molina. In other words, if we treat it as an emergency. The problem with the IPCC forecast, however, of twelve years, which is now only eleven years, is that it's conservative. This is according to other peer-reviewed research. So council members, we don't have eleven years. In fact, we may have only five, according to a Harvard climate scientist, James Anderson. But he said this over a year and a half ago, so in a sense, we may only have three years. The tricky thing about climate crisis is that it's occurring invisibly out there in the air and in the oceans. No one sees it, just like no one sees radiation. We only see its effects. Our brains don't connect the dots between what they can't see and the effects. So we're lulled into a complacency. This is the golden hour. We're like frogs in a pot of water, slowly coming to a boil, and we don't realize it. One writer has blatantly called our time, quote, "The age of needless catastrophe," end quote. All this is to say, we have a massive and tragic problem on our hands. There's no time left, and we'll be lucky to avert disaster even if we act with urgency. Please act decisively so we can move on quickly to the real changes we need to make. Thanks for hearing me tonight.
Thank you, Jack. Yeah, my bad. I should have announced, when public comments are held, I see some, some fresh faces, some new folks attending. It's roughly three minutes per speaker, and the council's not allowed to deliberate over anything that's not actually on the agenda. So they can take information, ask a question or two, and refer it to staff. So that, those are kind of the ground rules. So you have hopefully three minutes or less, but we will, we'll work with it.
Great, short statement. I come tonight, as Jack and others do, to urge the council to declare a climate emergency. I come as a member of the local community, human and non-human. The declaration of a climate emergency will assist greatly to galvanize the building of life-giving connections between us so that we may be increasingly resilient and responsive to the genuine crisis at hand. There are many, many changes needed, and I hope that we can make those changes together in connection as a community to come to know and rely on each other. I urge you to declare a climate emergency as a citizen in the hopes that the city that I love and where I make my home will take much greater action to protect, nurture, and restore our relationship to the land. It is simply insane to destroy your own land base, and that is what our dominant culture is doing, and as much as the citizens of Ojai value our nature and that way of life, we are still living in the model of the dominant culture in the city. And again, many changes are needed. I would like to live in a sane city, in a city that models and inspires sanity for our neighboring communities and for our children and our fellow community members. Lastly, as a mother, I urge you to declare a climate emergency for the many young ones that our valley nurtures, human and again, non-human. When they consider our actions now and in the years to come, may they have good reason to honor us and not to view us with horror for not doing everything possible, wondering why we didn't do everything possible to protect them by securing a livable planet. My son is five, and I told him I was coming tonight, and he asked if he could come, and I said, "No, not tonight." And he asked what I was going to say, and I said, "Is there anything you want to tell them?" And he said, "Can you let them know that the ultimate meditation is to protect the earth?" So that's the message from my son, Elon, who's five, who lives here in Ojai. Thank you for hearing me.
Lorena, is it McDonald?
Maldonado.
Oh, Maldonado. Okay, sorry, bad eyes here. With Jeff Otterbein on deck. Go ahead, Lorena.
Again, I don't know if you guys are familiar with me yet or not, but hi. I came to ask what they have asked to, but I, I'd just like to start with, we don't need another reason to declare a climate emergency. It's all of us as a planet, as a community, as a, as people, you know, as races that breathe and multiply. I think that we, we're in a really tough spot right now, and I think we're here for a reason, and I feel like this is a really great opportunity to make the best of it. So I urge you to please make this something that we can look back on and think, oh, we came from that. Like, we got better from that. That's a step up. That's it. It took us this much time, but we're here now, so please, like, I would like to ask to please consider a climate emergency. This is a crisis, and this is, should be treated as such. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorena. My apologies on the name. Jeff, you're up, and Anita Hendricks is...
Good evening, council. Thanks for having us. My name's Jeff Otterbein. I want to thank you, first of all, for the, sticking with this clean, clean energy initiative and the electricity, and also for banning fracking and the, and no new drilling two weeks ago. Those are great steps, and I appreciate that. I wanted to explain a little bit what it is for me to declare a climate emergency. And a climate emergency for me is when you, you turn into, you change your mode of thinking from normal mode and business as usual to an emergency mode. For example, if your house is on fire, you turn into, you get into emergency mode right away. You'll go outside, you'll grab your hose, you'll do intensely what you need to put that fire out. You don't think about it. I think this is what it means to me, getting into that emergency mode. So can we keep it up for a long time? Emergency mode, keeping it going for a long time is pretty difficult, but our country did it one time in World War II. After the bombing in Hawaii, the, the country decided, this is an emergency. And we jumped on it in a way that I don't think we've ever done anything like it before or since. It was a mobilization of our population, our people. There were victory gardens that produced forty percent of our produce. They stopped making, producing automobiles for several years, and they produced airplanes and ships. It was an intense, massive effort by our, all communities in our country. And this is what it feels like it, it is to me. We need to promote this in a way that, that you all and all of us in this room spread this emergency mode to the county, to the state, and to a national level so that we take this on as the emergency that it is. And I appreciate you considering that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anita, you're up, and Kevin, is it Barron? Barron?
I'm also speaking about the situation on our planet. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to share some unpleasant facts. Since the dawn of civilization, humans had caused the loss of eighty percent, eighty-three percent of all wild animals and one-half of the plants. We are facing this six, we are in the midst of a sixth mass extinction, mostly due to habitat destruction by human beings. Ninety-six percent of mammals that are humans and livestock, four percent are animals. In the last fifty years, one-half of Earth's animals have been lost. And that's mainly the issue of habitat destruction. In addition to habitat destruction, we are now facing a climatic crisis which threatens the fate of our planet, ourselves as adults, our children and grandchildren, hopefully there will be some. I would like to urge the council to declare a climate emergency, along with a number of other cities and nations in the world. We don't have time to dally. We need to act quickly. I would like to ask if you have any questions to let me or one of the other people, Jack, who have spoken, and also ask you to ask yourself, what would it take to declare a climate emergency here in Ojai, our city council taking that valiant stance? Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, with Catherine on deck.
Hello again. I won't repeat what others have said, but I'm here to speak to the effort of a climate, declaring climate emergency, but I'd like to speak to you a little bit about what goes beyond that. In other words, are we just talking about symbolic gesture? No. I, I don't think that is sufficient. I think while symbolic gestures have power and can be used for great import by yourselves and other members of, of the elected officials, however, I think that this calls for something more. So I would urge you, in addition to declaring a climate emergency, to think about, and I would propose that you have a committee which would start to look at action items, things like creating a food forest. There are any number of ideas represented by the people who have come to speak here and others who have gone ahead and declared a climate emergency and have taken actions on those. I'm not going to bore you with a list of, of things that can be done, but I assure you there are things that are much stronger than simply, you know, the symbolic gesture because, as others have said, we are in a time of crisis that needs to be addressed. It's no longer climate change. You may have seen The Guardian talk about, it's not climate change, it's, it's a crisis. And when you're in a crisis, the first thing you do is, you know, you have your, your emergency responders who come in and assess the situation. So, you know, we need to assess the situation, we need to look at what can we do here in the Ojai Valley, and there are many positive things which you've, you know, as somebody has, as others have noted, you've already taken some steps in that direction, and I applaud you for that. But I think there are many more things that we can do, and we should at least have a committee of people, and I will gladly help with any way I can with that, and I'm sure others here will as well. So as they say, I yield back my time to the others.
Okay.
Are there any questions you have for me or before I step back or...
No, but thank you for your remarks, and Catherine, you're...
My name is Catherine Barron. I'm here again tonight to reinforce the urgency of our community's call for a climate emergency doc... our community's call for a climate emergency declaration. I understand that our request was heard last meeting, and that several members of council expressed their desire to be thorough about exploring what a climate emergency declaration means. I implore you all not to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. While meticulousness is often advisable, delay, in this case, is not. And I urge the council to consider the implications of the swiftly escalating climate crisis we are in. We are facing, in all seriousness, an uninhabitable future, an unlivable Ojai. This is not being dramatic. It is being matter-of-fact about what current internationally agreed-upon research has demonstrated, that we have a rapidly diminishing window of time to avert the scenario where wildfire, water scarcity, inability to grow food, weather extremes, and unbreathable air is our everyday reality. To quote Michael Marshall in a recent Forbes magazine, "Forget about deadlines, such as five to twelve years to avert catastrophe. The simple truth is that stopping the climate crisis gets harder if we leave it later." It's like putting off paying your credit card bill. The interest just keeps mounting, and the total bill keeps getting worse. I do not wish to just sound panicked. There are real and effective steps we can take immediately to increase our community's resilience. I simply ask that the urgency of this matter is given its proper weight. There will be no fence-related moratoriums, no zoning codes to consider, no drowned street traffic initiative if we cannot work together to protect a livable climate. I speak to you now to sound the alarm. Our house is on fire. Please do not tell me that you have to make sure the rooms are up to code or tend to the availability of parking before helping put out the blaze. All of the work council does is important and essential to a thriving town. So let's get our priorities in order so that we can ensure there is still a place to do such work together. Please, declare a climate emergency immediately. Enact the groundwork for a World War II-scale mobilization of resources, jobs, and policy to transition away from lethal fossil fuels. Please put this as immediately as possible on the next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Russell? You're competing against Bill Miley for...
Sorry, I couldn't help myself.
...the most appearances in a feature film.
You guys know about me and greenhouse gases and, and climate change. I just wanna make sure that the record shows that there's things that can be done really quickly if we choose to. The low-hanging fruit, including the renewable microgrid with solar and other carbon-free sources of energy, stopping us having to drive on fossil fuels by supporting electric vehicles, and the bicycle safety stuff, you know, that Topa Topa stuff could be done this year. And finding ways for all of us to reduce our air travel are some of the easier things we can do. The bigger concerns, and I know Bill Warrick is aware of this, is to help residents bring their jobs back into the valleys. They don't have to travel to LA to earn their money. You know, the wife, he's the one that struck me in the head with the need for high-speed Wi-Fi. You can do a lot with that. Bringing workers into our local area with affordable housing, if we have the people that are doing our jobs for us in our area, not only will they enrich our culture, but they will not have to drive from Oxnard or Camarillo to do their work. So those are a little bit more challenging, but those are within the reach of this group. And I encourage you to take on all those and, and related activities as part of dealing with this crisis. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Russell. Okay, I'm gonna call a recess to the regular council meeting and open up the special meeting. We're running a little behind here, but Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. This, this item on the special agenda is an item to consider a, an adoption of an urgency ordinance related to fences and walls on, in front yards. The city has received several recent inquiries about newer reconstructed fences in various front yard, fences or walls in various front yard scenarios. With the recent discussion and the item on the regular agenda tonight, allowing council to determine fence hedges and walls requirements and changes, we have recommended that council determine whether they would want to place a moratorium while that is being processed. The ordinance that's attached to the staff report places a moratorium on new fences and walls taller than three feet, three feet in the front yard between a primary residence and the property line. We put this item together fairly quickly, and I have, we had heard, or had also considered putting an item on that would limit the fences to any fence regardless of height in the front yard at this time. But the ordinance before you, like I said, it is limited to the taller than three feet in the front yard between the primary residence and the property line. And I believe the city attorney actually has the, the language for the, kind of the alternate that we had proposed.
Yeah, so as you, as you were aware, this item arose quickly. And in further discussions this afternoon, we developed some adjusted recommended language. What's in the staff report and what's in the, the agenda now is a moratorium that would prohibit any new or expanded fences or walls taller than three feet between a primary residence and the front property line. And the proposed alternate language for your consideration would be to prohibit the new or expanded fences or walls, either permits or construction, located between any existing primary residence and the front property line of the parcel. So the two key changes are getting rid of the three-foot allowance, reflecting the idea that the proposal is to have a temporary freeze on new fences and front yards while the council debates the matter at length. And, and with the proper public consideration that should be given to this question, as opposed to allowing things that might become inconsistent with the new rules to be built in the meantime. And to define it as any existing primary residence to further freeze the status quo, so that if a homeowner wished, they could expand their house, of course, with the right permits and, and proper approvals, but that that expansion wouldn't reset the line for where the fence could be. The proposal, if approved, requires a four-fifth vote, and is, would be in effect for forty-five days through August twenty-third, 2019. From there, it can be extended twice. The first extension can be up to ten months and fifteen days, and the second extension can be up to a year. With, and those extensions require, again, four-fifths votes in public hearings. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff?
I just wanna make sure, when is our next council meeting in August?
It's on the twenty-seventh, I believe. So it is after that forty-five day period. So we would need to have a special meeting.
Yeah. We would be expecting, if this passes, to schedule a special meeting for the council to consider an extension sometime in mid-August before that expiration. And that's a statutory deadline, and otherwise, it is admittedly inconvenient, but forty-five days is the statutory deadline.
Okay. Bill?
And your alternative language would be consistent with council considering and possibly implementing a permitting system for all fences and walls.
That's correct.
Okay. Other questions of staff?
I have one question.
Randy?
So the, we're gonna be discussing fences and hedges tonight. So why would we put a moratorium on something that we're discussing tonight? Wouldn't this be something to put in place after our discussion on fences and, and walls and hedges?
And the reason we are discussing it tonight is because it's being, because the hedges, fences, walls item is being discussed tonight. It seemed counterproductive to us that we would be permitting fences or walls now while we're working on changing the code. So we're, we kind of brought them in, in tandem.
Someone needs to help me understand this better.
It's a timeout while the debate and action of the council on the other issue, rather than to have the ordinance that's being contemplated, I guess, for fences and hedges during the interim.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this would stop, even if someone currently had an application or was about to apply, for a fence or a wall that was completely compliant with our current code, this would not, they would no longer be approved, even though it's totally compliant with what's written on the books right now. This would be at least for the next forty-five days. They cannot be approved.
Nothing would be issued.
So that's it. So if we make any changes tonight, then if we don't make any changes, and the moratorium's in effect, you still can't get it approved. But then we have forty-five days to make any changes, and then that'll go into effect.
And it, for what it's worth, bear in mind, getting the changes that are discussed tonight on the books may take more than forty-five days.
And, and if we make any cha, yeah, I was gonna say, if we make any changes, it's gonna take two meetings.
And could I make one?
Just saying, Randy, did you?
Yeah, yeah, I'm still, I'm digesting all this, but, but all this makes sense.
I had the same question earlier.
I think, I think one point, if I can make it, is we have multiple fences that, whether we accept the planning commission's recommendations or not, we have fences on either side of that that are currently waiting, some that would be approved or some that would be denied based on tonight's discussion, and then the subsequent adoption of that ordinance.
So one last question. So there's, technically, right now, there's more than one, one individual applying, or, or is, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
There's a multitude of people that are applying for this, for a variance, or at least allowing for some form of a six-foot or higher fence in, in their front property?
With some variation of, of the different elements discussed, whether it's certain heights and certain, within certain portions of the setback, but there's multiple fences that the hedges, fences, walls discussion applies to at this time.
Okay, Bill?
Another, two things. You see this often, Councilman Annie, when you're about to look at modifying your regulatory regime, and you don't wanna have a lot of, you know, rush for the, rush for the, the permit, or rush to do things that don't require a permit now that we're contemplating maybe requiring a permit for. You really don't wanna create an incentive for people to, to create, to engage in a, in a last-minute rush of things that are against the, the intent of the original code, and certainly against possibly the intent of what we might deliberate. So it's a way of making sure that, you know, you don't create some disincentives for behavior that's not in character with the community. And the, the second thing I wanna say is that I think that what's come to light recently is that the language does need to be cleared up, because there is a significant issue in terms of the intent of the original code and how it's implemented, and whether or not there are loopholes, if you will, if, that's one, a, a way of looking at it, that, that allow resets of where, you know, large fences could go across front yards that, you know, not, certainly not within the intent of, of where the original code was. So it's basically a way of a timeout until we figure it out.
Okay. Ryan?
I just wanna, I, this, so, a well there may end up being a rush, and we don't wanna cause that to get in. I just wanna make it clear, this is not a situation where people are rushing afterwards. They put their application in, they try to get a permit, and now we're saying we're putting a moratorium on our own rules that already are in existence, that they applied under, and saying, no, we're not gonna approve you. So this isn't, this isn't a rush to the box to get it in before the thing changes. This is specifically applied to two applications, 'cause we might change it, even though they applied before we got around to putting any moratorium.
And I would give us a little history lesson. Remember, it only took one example of a problem that we needed to address to put a moratorium in to get the anti-formula business in place. It, one, one event exposed something that needed to be addressed immediately with a moratorium, as did the cell tower situation. One event exposed a situation that we needed to address.
And we also put a moratorium on this.
Okay, before we get into the debate, are there any questions for clarification? Because I have two cards here from the public.
And I agree with you, Bill. I just wanna bring it up.
Okay, I'm going to, I have, Jeff Wells. Come on up, Jeff. And is, is this U-Bank, Mike U-Bank?
Urbanic.
Urbanic, okay. You're on deck.
Well, first of all, I don't see the rush. I see one applicant, and I don't see multiple applicants, you know, coming here with regards to the issues you brought up, Bill. Cell tower, the well, you know, the drilling of the wells and what have you. Those were huge, wide community efforts and whatnot, that basically contemplated some of the issues associated with a moratorium. And so I just wanna, I, I want you guys to tell me, if I can get my phone to work here, but it basically says, the city can only adopt a moratorium if it contains legislative findings that there is current and immediate threat to the public health, safety, and welfare. That's question number one. Question number two is, I, I've seen some bias here, and I'm a little bit disturbed. I think it was the June eleventh Planning Commission. There was public input. There was debate with the commissioners. They were voting, and then all of a sudden, this person comes up while they're voting, taking roll count, and basically reopens the planning commission meeting again. I was floored when I saw that. I was, I was, you know how many times I sat back here that I had to hold back with regards to coming up and saying, giving my last two cents with regards to, or clarification with regards to, you know, a decision that they were making of this importance? And I couldn't believe it, but this person was a council member. They got up, they basically disrupted the, the voting, they opened the public comment again, gave their biased opinion, and basically, the planning commission basically resumed, and then they had their vote. If that isn't influencing a government body, you know, there is serious, you know, concerns with that. And, and, and Johnny, you, you basically said, there is a process here. When you got up here, you said there was a process here, and this is how we're gonna do it. And I know what the process is with regards to reopening, you know, a, a voting, you know, when, when a meeting is closed, and then you have someone basically disrupt the meeting to reopen, to give final, you know, to give final verdict or final judgment. Anyway, I just would like to know what the legality is with regards to the comment I wrote with the government code that I quoted here, and to know exactly what this emergency is, what the threat, threat is. We all know that we had this issue come up three to four years ago. Basically, just got stagnated. You had all the, you know, citizens rising up, basically not wanting to, you know, tear down their fences, their walls that they had up there for generations. So I'm just trying to figure out now, what's this emergency? What's the concern with regards to the safety? If you need to basically clean up the language, granted, there's a lot of language that needs to be cleaned up. I get it. But this, this isn't something that you created a moratorium over.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. I guess we'll come back to that on the two questions on legality. Mike, Urbanic?
Urbanic. You have no idea how many things I hear. Hi, Susan.
Hi.
First of all, I'm an architectural photographer. I do work all over the country, everywhere and every section of California. Housing, most housing is done in great big bunches and lots by big builders. These days, an affordable house is a million dollars almost anywhere you go, maybe two million. These are tracts, and they're homogeneous. They all have six-foot walls somewhere between the front yard and the backyard. We don't do that in Ojai. Ojai is not homogeneous. It's a very unique place. Since I've been reading about this fence and wall controversy for, for a couple of years, I wonder why you want everything to be the same. I don't know who drives this, drives this, but it's not Ojai. I've been here only forty years. Okay, I'm not a lifetime guy, but I've been here for a while. The plans for, I live at 207 South Ventura Street, directly next door to one of the subjects of this, I think it's a witch hunt tonight. There's a current code. And your intention to do something else, no matter what that might be, does not, should not allow you to move the goalposts on these people who have their own timeframe. They took out a loan, they made a commitment, they have a plan. It was all under the current code, and it works. I don't know why you'd wanna do this to them. Now, it's a financial hardship. They wanna put a six-foot wall in, well back from the street, 'cause the house that Mrs. Starr built was not built for the lot. She loved the layout of that house, 'cause it was just like the one they had in, in Santa Paula. It does not fit the house. We have a house on the other side of us that was designed perfectly for that lot, the same size lot as Mrs. Starr's. And it's a beautiful house, it's a beautiful space, and it looks great for the community. They're trying to make use... They're trying to make use of the front area of the yard, which is too big to do anything else with, and it's gonna be a good thing. The problem is we're on the freeway between Libby Park, we call it the homeless highway, Libby Park down to Creek Road. And I don't think you want a family buying that property with a swimming pool in the front with people, you know, peeking into the little girls in the pool in the front. It's a very solid plan, it's a good deal. They've been very responsible since they've owned the property, can't say enough about the character of the people that are doing this. And I think, you need to think about the morality of moving goalposts on people who have made an investment on the rules that exist right now. I think you should withhold any moratorium and let them do what the rules permit as of today. And I endorse the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the cards I have.
I think he had card.
Come on up, I don't, is it?
Item three? I asked one for, are you David?
Yes, Dave Lynn. I'm the applicant, one of the applicants, I guess. How are you guys? Thank you for hearing us tonight.
Okay.
Are you ready to go?
Good to go.
Okay, yeah, we're one of the applicants and Mike was our neighbor speaking about it. First of all, thank you guys. I know you're all serving the community, so I appreciate, appreciate your service. I also want to jump on board, even though I think they all left, but I agree with the emergency that, you know, we're in as far as the environment's concerned. And it's part of, one of the reasons why we are doing the projects locally. We are local residents. My wife is a lifelong resident. I've been here for thirty years and we are employing local contractors and keeping everything local, Ojai lumber, and we're planning on remodeling this house, which we're demoing right now. But we've submitted plans to put a pool in the front yard, which is almost a quarter acre of the property. The property's almost a half acre, but the front yard is extremely large. The house is set back sixty-nine feet at the deepest point from the sidewalk. We're proposing to put a, a wall around the pool. It has to have, by law, has to have at least a five-foot wall. Can't be, can't be a chain link fence, can't be a wood fence, can't be climbable. It's gotta be something that a kid can't climb. So that's the terminology, a barrier around the pool. We're asking to build a cabana twenty foot, twenty-one feet away from the sidewalk, which is per code as Mr. Blatz has explained. And I've also met with Mr. Vega also regarding this. We were told by the planning, Luke, by the planner of Ojai, that if we build a, a pool in the front yard and we add a cabana or any outbuilding that's set back within the legal code, that we can obviously enclose that with the wall or fence or whatever we choose up to six feet tall. And that's what we're proposing to do. We want to do something that's in code. We pull permits. We are local people trying to just put a pool in the front yard because we have a huge front yard. Our backyard has heritage oaks. We have about neighboring on our property, five or six, at least fifty to a hundred, two-hundred year old oaks. We don't want to disturb the drip line, we don't want to disturb the, the roots, obviously. Therefore, even though we do have room in the back for a pool, we don't want to hurt the trees. So we're trying to do everything above board and we feel like we're doing this in the most legal and respectful manner for the community. We're enhancing the community. We're taking a house that's been basically, basically untouched for thirty years that had, you know, hadn't been touched, so. And they also, by the way, have about six-foot hedges in the front, right on the sidewalk, which we will be taking down when we're done doing the, and making sure that they're not within the ranges. Mr. Haney's dealt with us before, so I think he can even testify to our, the quality that we bring to the neighborhood. We're not, we're not trying to outprice first-time home buyers. We're not even buying houses in those ranges. The house that we did before had been sitting for six months. Nobody was interested in buying it. It was completely, it wasn't neglected, it was just the original nineteen sixty house that we just restored back to its original beauty. That's what we're trying to do here. We're just trying to restore Ojai back to its beauty. So if you do the, if you do the hedge and fence moratorium, then that basically puts our project on hold. When we're only trying to be in compliance with the existing code, we're not asking for anything outside of the code. Any questions?
I have a question.
Still got forty-eight seconds.
That's counting up now.
Oh, gotcha.
When you said there's a hedge in the front. When you said there's a hedge in the front, are you talking about the oleander bushes?
There, no, there is bottle brush in the front.
The bottle brush?
The oleanders are along the, along the bike path.
Well, both, both sides you have. Along top and then along.
So a forty-five day moratorium would put a stop to your entire project or how would that work?
Well, yeah, we're submitting it as an entire project. So we're, right now, we're just in the middle of demo, demoing and waiting for, for planning to get back to us, even though we were already approved. Apparently Luke is gone or no longer with, I'm not sure what's going on with Luke, so. Luke gave us a verbal approval that we could move forward with the project, so we're in engineering right now, getting ready to submit, and then I was told that everything's on hold now.
Well, this was after you went to Planning Commission?
No, we went to Planning.
And asked for a variance and then you withdrew that application?
Correct. That was over, that was two months ago. We went and tried, applied for a variance and that's what Jeff Wells was speaking about. That was going to be denied or postponed, so we decided, as you might say, a loophole to build a, a building, which is in our rights because it's twenty feet in the setback.
Well, specifically, I believe the planning, I observed the Planning Commission, I didn't participate in it. They said they, that there was not a complete site plan and they wished to continue the item until you submitted a complete site plan.
True, but based off.
And then you withdrew your application.
The reason we withdrew is because of the, because of what we heard, the rumblings in town was that the, that you guys weren't gonna, you could always come back and, and deny the variance. And so we just decided to, why waste another six months before? So the variance was harder to put, put through than to build a cabana, which was also gonna add to the property, enhance the property. We're not building Trump's wall here, so I just want to say that out. Some, for some reason, you guys think, and I have absolutely nothing against Trump, that there's not gonna be barbed wire on the fence. It's just gonna be an enclosure that's keeping kids safe from a pool with, you know, beautiful bougainvillea and vines covering it. It's gonna be, it's gonna enhance the neighborhood. That's it. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
I want to point out here that, you know, we're faced with policymaking here and, and we have to look at things in general and not in a specific case. And what, the reality here is that the Planning Department told an applicant something which then anybody in this town could do if they wanted to. And that is you can build an outbuilding out front and that establishes a, a way that you can enclose your property with a wall. That's what our Planning Department told them. And I have a problem with that potential in terms of, because if you, if, that process that was, was recommended by the Planning Department for them to proceed with, we have to look at it from a policy standpoint of what that's applied, if that's applied to everywhere in town where anybody that wants a wall across the front of their property can simply build a small outbuilding. And according to the Planning Department's current version of belief or interpretation of the code, that allows you to build a six-foot wall across the, or, or, up to a six-foot wall across the front of the property. That's a, an enclosure pattern that I have a problem with in terms of the character of the community in general, and it's not particular to this applicant. And that's why I'm in favor of we figure out a way to deal with that Planning Department interpretation of our code.
Can I just say one thing? Sorry.
No, that, you have to talk to the, you have to talk to the chair.
The planner didn't recommend anything. I, I, I'm the one that recommended it passed.
Yeah, thank you.
They stated that that was okay.
Well, I guess there's a question for the attorney then. Let's.
Under the current code, it is legal if you build an outbuilding in, in front of a house but outside the setback, that is the required minimum setback, provided the outbuilding itself complies with code, meaning one story and meets building code, et cetera, then that establishes the line for which the front fence can be up to six feet tall maximum. Hence, the idea is if the, the goal is to prevent a fence of that style or that type from being built that blocks the view of the house or that encloses a front yard, then a moratorium along these lines or something similar would be needed to stop pending applications. Of course, the other option is to let those that are pending go forward and set a rule, set a different rule in the future. The council could, of course, on any given permit, if the council disagrees with that interpretation of the current code, appeal that individual decision up the chain and have a, go through an appeal process to reevaluate that interpretation of the code. The alternative and perhaps easier solution, if you wish, is to adopt a moratorium tonight.
And both of those things could be done concurrently then?
Right.
I, yeah, and the moratorium, the statute, the statute fixes a forty-five day initial validity period with a goal that the council be doing, be evaluating the issues and moving it forward in that interim period. The idea being freeze the situation before you decide to change the rules and so that the city, so that things don't move forward in the interim that would be inconsistent with new rules once those new rules are adopted, reflecting the time that's involved in adopting new rules.
We have two questions. Go ahead. Ryan?
How many current situations is the city aware of where someone has used the outbuilding exception to build a fence that would otherwise not be allowable in the front area of their house or other building?
So we have, I believe this is the, the one reference is the only one that has the outbuilding issue. There's four applications pending that are affected by the hedges.
But they're not using the outbuilding situation?
Correct.
And we're not aware of any other situation other than this that was withdrawn that potentially had that saved?
No, this is not withdrawn.
Okay, well, then this is pending.
The one that has been mentioned by the resident is currently pending within this statutory timeline to evaluate that application. No delay was imposed. I believe there may, there may be others that exist that were already approved. That I'm not sure about. I'm aware of only one that would fit that outbuilding exception or not exception, that outbuilding rule.
And would the moratorium stop the outbuilding exception from already?
Yes.
Okay.
As proposed, and the reason it does so is because of the addition of the word "any existing primary, primary residence." That would block both an outbuilding or an accessory dwelling unit or other accessory structure. And the reference to existing would mean that no matter what outbuildings or even extensions to a house may be built in the future, during the pendency of this moratorium, the fence line is set at the current setback, meaning the current house.
Mayor? Well, you kind of gave me some clarity, but the, so right now on the books, we're allowed to extend the front of our house as long as it stays within the coded setback.
Correct.
Okay?
And meets the rest of the code.
And once we, and once we allow that room addition or cabana or whatever it is, then that now resets the front of the house. And therefore, in the past, we've allowed to have a six-foot wall adjacent to that structure. Am I correct?
That's correct.
And you're saying that this moratorium now, which is on fences and hedges and walls, I don't, is there any verbiage in here that says cabanas, ADUs or, so I don't know, I don't know how you're saying, if it's not in, if it's not in what we're discussing tonight, how it circumvents what's already legal? I'm, I'm lost on that.
I'm happy to explain how I see that. One is that, you're right, it doesn't mention ADUs or cabanas or other structures, but it only mentions the primary residence. By defining the fence setback as, as, as set by the existing primary residence, it means that no other structure can set the fence line. So if you expanded the house forward, you added a room, that doesn't exist as of tonight. So that can't, wouldn't count. In an ADU.
For the moratorium time.
An ADU wouldn't count nor would a cabana or some other outbuilding. Again, that would be for the moratorium period. That's, that's why those are, that's why I see those rules baked into this text. But it's of course subject to your policy discretion.
So, so, I'm sorry, Ryan.
No, no, go.
So, so let's, let's get through the forty-five days and now what happens to an individual that wants to do the ADU or wants to add on to the front of their house, what changes?
One, one clarification. It doesn't block the ADU. Nothing in this blocks an ADU, nothing in this blocks the house. It would block the fence or the wall only.
Well, but unless the builder doesn't, unless the builder isn't willing to do the ADU until they have clarification on the fence, then it does kill the whole thing.
Only if they make that choice, though.
Are we already in the code? The AD has, ADU has to be in the rear.
Well, I'm just talking about it.
Unless it's connected to the house.
Okay, come on, let's give a little order to it back.
But the point, what I'm trying to make is, I think that everybody understood the intent and you look at the code, it has to do with the not enclosing the entire house, establishing the fence line where the, the, the house stops. You know, that's the current code. The issue here that we're hearing out of planning is you could do a two-hundred square foot outbuilding, a storage shed, literally, establishing a new wall line. That's what is coming out of planning and that's why I think we need a moratorium to clarify.
Well, it's not so much coming out of planning as what the code currently says according to the city attorney.
Right, and I mean, it's what's written down. It's a policy. You said we make policies, but these are policies that were made.
And that's why when you, when you discover a problem.
Yeah, that the policy isn't what we thought it was.
We need to call a timeout.
Well, but this, why aren't we looking at a moratorium then that just deals with the outbuilding slash fence extension line? That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about putting a moratorium on people that have complied with the law, that have followed the law, we're punishing them after we're saying that they're doing something wrong when all they did was do everything right and now we're gonna put them on hold because they found a creative way to use our code that we don't like? What, we're forcing them to create a problem with the cabana that didn't exist until we were saying, well, we might pull the rug out from underneath them after they went and complied with all of our rules that were written down?
Comfortable with everybody doing what they want to do.
No, I'm saying why not moratorium the idea that we can't have an outbuilding, set the new, set the new fence line?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
But that doesn't mean we have to tell everybody else who's followed the rules, they gotta wait a month and a half and hope that we come back with something that still works for their plans. We can stop the outbuild, we can put a moratorium on strictly an outbuilding resetting the fence line. We can do that, but that's not what this moratorium is. This is much broader. And what we're talking about is us wanting to change all these other rules about hedges, walls, and hedges, fences, walls, and hedges, but really what we're not, what we're talking about, which I agree with you, is hey, wait a minute, we found a really weird loophole that we don't like. In fact, the applicant, I think, would prefer not to do the cabana and just do their original plans with the fence, which is what they looked at and it said the code seemingly indicated. And I, I just can't, I, punishing the wrong people because we got it wrong, punishing people who do it right because we were the ones who got it wrong or previous people got it wrong and there was a loophole, to me, doesn't make sense. If we want to change the rules moving forward, I understand we might want to change policies, but we can stop this one loophole without stopping everybody who's doing it right from being able to move forward.
Randy?
Well, I can, simply add, I concur with what Ryan's saying, but the, to me, and I understand, and I understand what Councilman Wyrick is saying, I, you know, I don't want to see six-foot hedges in people's front yards. I'm adequately opposed to that. One of the things that I look at here is it's twenty-one feet from the front of the property. You know, my house is, the front of my house is roughly twenty-one feet from the sidewalk. So it's not a, it, 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 it's not an imposition to me. It's not something greater than what already exists in probably a third of our community. The, the part that I guess concerns me is, like I said, what, what Ryan said, it seems like we're going after a cabana versus fences and hedges. And that's the problem I have. And to be honest with you, it seems like we have this issue that was brought to us by one individual, which to me doesn't create an emergency. And I struggle with, with penalizing someone who is using the existing codes to, to do what they wanted, you know, to do what they do. I, I'm not for swimming pools in people's front yards, but I'll be honest with you, I spent hours this weekend looking at other cities and other communities regarding their codes on fences, hedges, and walls. And when you're doing that, you realize that no one has anything either about having swimming pools in front yards. So that's another issue that needs to be addressed if we're gonna be doing revisions to our existing codes. So there's a number of these things that may come up. Maybe, maybe tonight for David and in his project, maybe it's, you know, he's the example that may get turned down, but I'm just struggling with it, guys. I'm just telling you that.
Right now, he can.
Just a second, let me get a little over here. Sue's turned and Ryan has.
There's no question in my mind that it sets a, it sets a bad precedent to allow a six-foot wall in a front yard. That's just not Ojai. That's more what you would see perhaps in Montecito, okay? And it's an, I mean, to my way of thinking, if they want to go forward with their project, it could go forward without a swimming pool and a, and a six-foot wall, correct? it could go forward without a swimming pool and a, and a six-foot wall, correct? It could go forward without a swimming pool.
Don't talk to the audience just yet.
It could go forward without, without that. I'm, I'm struggling too. I, I like these people very much, I want them to, you know, their project to thrive, but it's a very fine line for me because in the issue of fairness, we are setting a precedent that other people will think that somehow they got special treatment and that, and now they can't, the next person can't do it. I mean, correct me if I'm misunderstanding.
Yeah, just one point of view.
The, the precedent we're setting is the current code, but, you know, I, that's what the code is. And I think it's amazing, we had a litany of people stand up here tonight and ask us to pass a climate emergency, and instead we're going to pass a hedge emergency. That seems insane.
Well, it's not, that's not, that's not what it is.
That may work at a trial here.
For the second time. For the second time.
Okay, come on, guys, that's, this is not, you know-
So getting back to the seriousness, I used to be like Ryan on statements like that because I agree with them, but let's get back to this. So, so Suzie, just, we're not creating any, any special thing here. We have a, an individual, someone from the community, who has gone through the proper processing and has found out a way to, to utilize our codes and our procedures and our methodologies to complete a renovation of a property that he owns. Part of me comes back to that thing that, you know, that's my property. Now, I'm not saying I get to color my house purple, you know, with gold trim and da-da-da-da-da. You know, there is some compliance that we have to think about when we're, when we live in a community, but I think the setback is far enough from the curb. He doesn't have to go six feet, the code is sixty inches, he could go sixty inches on the wall. He could decorate that wall in a manner that, that beautifies the neighborhood, and he could put shrubbery and landscaping in front of that twenty-one-foot area so that the wall wouldn't even be the focus of that project. So I see, I see a lot of wins for it, but I understand the argument against it, so I'm, I'm torn.
Yeah, well, okay. Just a second, Bill, just a second. But the terminology of a renovation, this is not a renovation, that part of the project's a renovation, this is an expansion of what is there, and it's expanding a swimming pool and it's expanding fences into a front yard, which I think is Bill's point on policy.
Right.
And unfortunately, when these things come up, I mean, this clearly is a, an interpretation of the law, the following the law was a variance where it was optional with a judgment to be made by the planning commission or the council, and then the, by reading of the code saying there's a loophole here, we don't need your permission. In fact, I think I heard that was one of the remarks, that it was made to a citizen who had some concern about this, so, Bill?
I think the very fact that you mentioned being torn is why we should have a moratorium to figure it out, and because the appropriate question to ask is not this one project, but are you okay with dozens of people around town doing the same thing or not? And I think that's, that, I, I disagree with, with looking at this as a special case. The purpose of a moratorium is to fix an identified issue with our code in a fair and timely fashion, and, and that's why I think it's important because the, you know, we're going to be debating later tonight the whole issue of do we, you know, the front porch city, as I would call it, a front porch city versus an enclosure city.
Right.
This is an enclosure.
That's what I'm saying, I understand.
And, and is that something that we find, that we think is, is consistent and that could be facilitated by the construction of outbuildings throughout Ojai? And is, and do we want, and if we want to consider the planning commission's recommendation that we just go to a full permitting system for all fences and walls, again, another reason to do a moratorium, allow that to get in place. Right now, this is ministerial, does not require, does not require any permitting, does not require any review. And so literally, if we don't do a moratorium, we're saying it's for, okay for people to build, you know, you don't even need a permit for a small outbuilding. You could start, people could start building small outbuildings and walls all through Ojai without a permit.
Well, we can still change-
Unless we do a moratorium.
We're not saying permanently that it's that, we're just saying that we're not going to say that for forty, that, I mean, until we change it, that you can still do it under the current code. We're not saying we can't change it forever.
That's a decision we make.
But that's, but we're also saying that even though they did, even people out there who followed our rules, sorry, we changed in the rules. And how long has this city been, been told it's been doing that? How long has this community development department been blamed and been accused of moving the goalposts and changing what we do? How many of us have said at these meetings that we don't want to do that anymore? And here is the direct example. I agree the policy's wrong, but I, but the implications of the moratorium caused the wrong impact. We should have moved forty-five days ago to change this, not waited for an application that needed to change.
You've been asking for the planning commission to come back with a recommendation to us for, what, over a year now?
Why, I mean, but who are we going to blame? We got to blame ourselves.
And that, and that, and yeah, we need to move on fixing the code, and another reason why you need to have a moratorium to have a timeout to fix it.
You can blame them.
Yeah.
You have this four or five-
I guess, Mayor, my last, my last comment is, I still, I still goes back, it still comes back to me that if I own my property and I have the ability to renovate it and I meet the setback guidelines, that I should have the right to do that. You know, if that includes moving, you know, building a wall along with that so that I increase my side yard space or I do this or I do that, I mean, I, I, that's where, that's the problem I'm having here is, what we're doing is we're, is we're a, we're a re, remodeled community, we're not a completely new construction community, we do exactly what Dave does on a daily basis in this community. And now I'm hearing that we want to change those rules, and, and I don't know if I agree with that, with that either, so.
When was the last time we built a swimming pool in a front yard?
I'm not aware of any recent ones, I defer to James on that.
I'm not aware of any recent ones.
Right, and, and the, for thirty years, this has been a home without a swimming pool in the front yard, and so because someone wants to do it, I don't blame them for wanting to do it, but originally, they, everyone thought that there was, it was a, not a discretionary, but a, a judgment on the part of the planning commission and the council, and when they looked at the law, they said, wait a minute, there's a way around that law. So I think there's a difference between that and denying somebody, some right that they, that the community wanted them, everybody to have. And this is always the problem when you change anything, including zones, you know, upzoning, downzoning. So a timeout for a review of it seems not an unreasonable thing to do, and I don't see how it stops anything to do with the renovation of the home while this gets worked out. Maybe it, maybe it can be worked out.
Spending other people's money.
Well, I would, it seems like we've deliberated it, maybe it's time for a motion, and we'll see where the votes are.
Okay, oh, yeah.
Want to be a person to get up there and speak?
Yeah, you do. Okay, at this point, right.
Mayor, did you want-
It'd be a good idea, there'll be some vacancies before too long.
Or do you want the city attorney to answer a legal question before we voted?
Sure.
I mean, I, you were-
The legal question raised earlier?
Yes, I believe you were going to defer-
So this, yeah, the standard here, set by government code section six, five, eight, five, eight and related case law, is that the council must find by a forfeit's vote that there is a current and immediate threat to the public's health, safety or welfare. The latter is a very broad category of legislative power. It's essentially the same standard that applies to any action you take, must be for the promotion, protection of the public's health, safety and welfare. The added piece is that it's current and immediate. That's what's added to the, looking at the standards for a government code section six, five, eight, five, eight moratorium. The focus is on would, would failing to adopt the moratorium result in changes on the ground that might impede your ability to enforce your codes later, or has, has been articulated in the past in some of the planning commission discussions? There are safety impacts from front yard walls or front yard compounds related to firefighting, police and other public safety aspects. The question is, do you find that finding adequate to meet that standard? That's the policy question for you.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, can, Mayor, can he repeat that? You're saying the safety issue is-
I don't think he can, but-
Is fire, is, is fire and safe, police and fire? Did I do that?
Right, the, the past testimony in one of the prior discussions on fences, hedges and walls, I believe here as well, noted that in some cases, front yard walls can create difficulties for firefighting and police access to a structure.
Yeah.
And the, the extent in any given property can be debatable based on its characteristics, but that could serve as a basis to make the finding.
I just, I just want to be able to repeat that later on tonight.
Okay. So for the purpose of moving on?
They'll ask you when you get-
But, but in the opinion of our legal counsel, this is a legitimate use of the moratorium power, is that correct?
Yes, this is defensible, because, in part because the focus is on both safety and welfare, and there's been strong welfare concerns identified regarding the idea of having permits issued for, or fences built or items that would be built that may be inconsistent with the code you're considering. The, the standard statutory use case for a moratorium in the zoning context is in the middle of debating and looking at adopting what changes may be made to zoning rules. So I think if this was adopted, which is the policy choice, it can be defended.
Well, I guess anything could be defended successfully?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's good.
Matt, I have one question with that. Matt, is the fact that we, if, if it were to be determined that the council was doing this because they didn't want a viable application to go forward that had already been submitted or had already been communicated to the city, and then they declare the emergency or the urgency, and then they change it, that's still a viable use for public health and safety and it doesn't, it's more not a stopped once somebody asked for it that we're circumventing the normal procedures of essentially-
No, because the application hasn't been approved yet. Until you have a, an application approved, a building permit issued and substantial construction in reliance on that permit, there is no vested right. Up until that moment, the council may change the rules, provided it follows the various statutes that govern how the council acts, one of which is the statute that allows this exact situation.
It was verbally approved.
So if, if there was any applica, so for, for pretty much any application that would come in, if the council sees an application that comes in and then we decide we want to change a policy, we'd have the ability to declare an urgency moratorium and wait to-
Provided you can, there's a forfeit's vote and the findings can be made, yes.
All the other requisites.
And the, the various rules are complied with, yes. And just to note for the question from the public communicated out of order, a verbal approval does not exist. Nothing in the city can be proved orally. Everything the city does on any context must be in writing, with the exception of votes at this meeting or a public meeting.
Okay, I think we've thoroughly discussed this, so I think it's time for a vote to see where we are and see whether or not that's worth further debate.
I'll go ahead and make a motion just to get things going and get to a vote.
Okay, we have a motion.
Make a motion to approve the-
I'm sorry, wait, real quick, I have one more question, I'm sorry. If we approve the moratorium and then we end up not changing any of the current codes, we can just lift the moratorium at any point?
It expires.
Well, no, but does it have to be the whole forty-five days?
You can lift it earlier than forty-five.
Like, for example, in the next hour, if we decide we're never changing anything, we can lift this moratorium and everything go back right to where it was?
Yes.
Yeah, that's all I wondered, thank you.
So I will make the motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
As the motion as amended, not the one in the pack, the one as amended by the city attorney.
I'll second.
Language as amended.
Moved and seconded, so.
All right, what was amended? I don't know what the, sorry.
So the, the proposal would be to have the moratorium, I'll just read the full sentence. This is section two moratorium, the operative language, notwithstanding any provision of the Ojai municipal code or any other ordinance of the city of Ojai, and except as otherwise provided in this ordinance, the moratorium, no building permit, grading permit, conditional use permit, designer view permit, variance, zoning clearance or other discretionary or ministerial approval or permit shall be issued for the construction, reconstruction, placement, replacement or development of new or expanded fences or walls, nor shall any such fence or wall be constructed if located between any existing primary residence and the front property line of the parcel. And then the rest is as in the text.
Yeah.
Okay, there's no objections, let's have the clerk call the rolls.
Uh, Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
I'm going to have to say no.
Councilmember Blatz?
No.
Council, Mayor Porten-Franzina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. The motion fails.
That's right.
Okay. So I guess that's the only item on the agenda for this particular thing, okay? The special meeting is now closed and the regular meeting is now back in session.
I'm going to take five minutes or two minutes.
Yeah, it's got to be four to five.
We're, we're in recess here for a few minutes. We're, we're in recess here for a few minutes.
Huh.
Okay, we're back in session, let's finish up on the road thing, so Greg can go home, unless he's got another one on the agenda.
Mayor, I was at the point of asking certain slides for project sheets to be put on, to discuss, if that's okay?
Certain what?
At the point we continued, I was asking for certain of these sheets to be put up for us to discuss.
Page thirty and thirty-one?
Division, thirty, thirty-one, and twenty-nine, which is division...
They're not in our packet, right?
No, they're in the Dropbox that was circulated.
Oh, I did look at that.
And, and these are two standalone divisions. That's, it's, it's not the, that, that PDF file, it's the other one with all of the sheets. Sheet thirty, the thirty of thirty-six, it's twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one.
Oh, no, but I have one.
What do you have?
We could start with thirty and thirty-one.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's not it.
It's page twenty-six.
Thirty...
Twenty-two?
That's, okay, the sheets are numbered differently on...
Yeah, Greg, slide thirty may not be page thirty.
It says sheet number thirty, which is South Montgomery.
Okay, great.
I have sheet twenty-nine that says that, Bill.
This one?
Okay, that one, okay.
Okay, great.
All right, I wanted to bring this up, because we all know where this is.
We know where it is.
This is all, this is also hundreds of thousands of dollars, because we're talking about moving the curb line out at some point, almost two car widths. And we're looking at, still continuing at the other end, for example, having a left and a right turn lane after you go to the right towards Ojai Avenue.
Do you think it'd be easier to see in the aerial view?
In other words, it's a significant reduction in width of that street right there.
Yes.
And I think there's some real problems there, and I have, Susan and I have discussed this in our initial parking committee meeting, and we really feel, well, I'm not gonna speak for her, I really feel that this, this part of our street project really ought to be deferred until we further study this, because we're talking about adding a number of street trees, significant reduction in width of, of South Montgomery, issues with unloading and unloading, unloading and loading of, of trucks, getting trucks in and out.
We got it.
I, I just, I just think there's some real problems with the cost-effectiveness of doing this, considering the, some other issues we have around town, and I, I just, I just have some real doubts about, you know, putting this in this bid package right now. The other issue that came up in our parking, and when we, and there might, and then just the whole issue of, of the parking discussion here, really is interspaced with this South Montgomery Street. And then the other part, which is, the, the, two, you know, is Libby, is the upper Libby, is, I really think that, you know, that's something we need to be looking at, is how we utilize the Libby parking lot. We may not want to use it the same way we've been using it, we may need to look at everything from parking tour buses, or expanding the overall capacity. I don't think that kind of overall study's been done, and I just, when I look at the complexity of these two components incorporated into the rainy season, because this project is gonna start Memorial Day, I would rather see we focus just on the streets, and we, and we take Division B and E out of this bid package for the time being, until we look at it further.
You say it's gonna start Memorial Day?
Yep.
I think you meant Labor Day.
Labor Day, excuse me. Yeah, they're looking at, this project is looking at starting Labor Day, right now, which is just a month before, the beginning of the, of the, beginning of the rainy season.
But are you suggesting pulling this out and substituting something else? Do we have anything else?
I have some things I'd like to substitute in place.
We could keep it doosed to street, a straight street projects, for the time being, and, and do some further study of the design implications of these two divisions, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, is there any other, you know, 'cause that's a great point you brought up, because we did, there was just, and if, if everybody on the council's not aware, there was some comments regarding Lav- the Lavender Festival, and I think everybody knows, we're all, apparently, we're all on Facebook, just so you all know that at home.
And I, I, I'm seriously...
We're not responding, but we're listening.
And I'm seriously thinking we might want to do some regulation on allowing tour buses in town.
Yeah, and that's a really, that would be a perfect spot.
This is a place for...
Especially with dual access, they don't have to back in, they can go on.
Getting back to, to your comment there, yeah, I would, you know, we had a gentleman, Greg, come to you about the White Oak Circle, street paving, so I would like to interject that, because you're working right around the corner at Grandview, and I think that'd be a great substitute. And then also, on the corner of Drown and Red Hill, on the northwest corner, that whole sidewalk and that whole area is completely lifted by a lot of street trees, so...
Sorry, is Drown and Red Hill?
Drown and, and Red Hill.
Okay.
And I'd like to, again, if you can look at that and do that as a substitution, if the council's for it, I'd like to do that.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with paving more streets, in fact, that is a high priority. But, okay, but, the, on the fly, deciding, don't we have a inventory of streets based upon condition, where who's next up in line, or are we just randomly picking, I know that one guy, was a good story, when he says, "I can't sweep my street, because I'm sweeping dirt," you know, the pavement's gone.
Notice how I didn't bring my street into the picture, because I'm right below him.
That was very good of you.
That's right, I thought it was very thoughtful.
I should mention, White Oak Circle is on the hot list, though, it's on, the pavement condition index was a next level street.
Guess that would fit?
Yeah, perfect.
Are you good with these substitutions?
If we add White Oak Circle, and then, in the, in the sidewalk, I guess part of it, we want to get out to bid quickly, so, you know, we could get the White Oak Circle, I think, in there, okay, the Drown-Red Hill sidewalk, I'll have to take a look.
You need to look at it, it's pretty bad, and it probably could use ADA approaches too.
Our typical improvements are, if it's lifted, is to replace the slab or grind it, so we don't have the trip hazard.
I think these have been ground, and the curbs are, are bad, too.
Okay, so at least we can take a look at these, and I guess I would suggest not a full block replacement of the sidewalk, that'd be unusual for us, but to replace...
Just a corner.
Okay, right, so it may not actually be part of the contract, might be a separate fix.
Maybe we have consensus there, to take these two divisions out, and add just some straight street work, on a high priority basis.
And then, and then turn these two over to the parking.
Okay, but do straight, when we say straight, straight street work, it's not easy for me to say, then when we, that's not, in, at least in my parlance, including sidewalks, sidewalks are expen-, concrete works expensive.
Right, you might include ramps, in that area, if there's ramps, we need to obtain ramps.
They need ADA ramps, that's the only reason I'm saying it.
What, what about the, isn't that ADA an issue with, on Montgomery?
Well, it is.
It is, and it has been for forty, fifty years, you know, it's not new.
It's a new ticket ride on a wheelchair.
What, what is the schedule now, for the brewery to get their curb cuts fixed, and that, get that side fixed for ADA?
They're resubmitting to Caltrans, right now, they have very minimal comments, yeah, I think with the standard turnaround Caltrans, I think this might be the fourth submittal, but it is down to extremely minimal comments, but it's not approved yet.
See, and then, I mean, that, to me, we could always go forward with fixing that, but let's, let's at least get the brewery part fixed first.
Yeah, right, yeah, the, the one over there, that is the real extreme cross slope in front of Agave Maria, it's adjacent to the tree, it's not really caused by the tree, it was kind of placed that way, and it, it continues on both sides.
We have a, we have a tree growing out of a building, a far hydrant, a water box, a tr-, a street light, and a far hydrant, all within, what, an eight-foot radius?
Wait, and a, and a yucca.
And a yucca.
It looks like it's growing out of the center of the crotch of the oak tree.
That's right, that's right.
But other than that, what's the problem?
And, and if you look at the whole sidewalk, up and down there, it's greater than two percent, I mean, it was, it's...
From the Emporium driveway cut, on the south side, all the way up to, to the nest.
We want to make it clear, at the restaurant there, the food is fantastic, we just want to make that clear.
Is, is there some suggestion, Bill, that there's a different solution to solving that particular part?
Well, there, we don't have to go that far out in the street to fix this problem.
We don't, this is really a lot of a complete street fix as well, it is to squeeze that street, there's a lot of pedestrian activity back and forth across, and this would really make cars move carefully through the area.
But you stated it in your presentation, this is one way, there are other ways to fix the ADA issue without going that far.
We could leave wider lanes, definitely, the more room, you tend to increase speeds, you tend to have unsafe conditions, yeah.
I just think we need to look at it.
Mm-hmm, so that's fair enough, that, it certainly is, I mean, we're, this is a paving project, we're trying to include complete street measures, like we did, as the push last time came in late, and we're trying to improve a few other projects at the same time. Parking lots, that lower Libby is beat, I don't think it's gonna get too much more beat in a couple more years.
But this doesn't preclude doing it, again, I mean, I just...
Yeah, it'll survive a couple more years for the next page or second.
Or even this next year.
It's not used, so we're trying to get it to be used some more, so, you know, until then.
I just, we need a, a design review, and, and we're also looking at, there might be a more cost-effective way of getting that ADA on South Montgomery done. I mean, we're talking, we could be talking about a swing of a few hundred thousand dollars each way.
Right now, estimated cost is about ninety-eight or something thousand, right? Yeah, so just below a hundred, so you might be able to swing it down to fifty or something, right?
Okay, I thought you originally were talking about three hundred.
Uh, no, it was about...
Does that change your opinion?
Hundred thousand.
No, because I, I think the issue is, do we really, we need to really think through that, and get some input, more input from the committee about reducing, going that far out into the street right there.
You're, you're concerned with the complete street element, not the construction of, yeah, the, well...
And, it is a, it, that intersection is probably the least well-designed, that's turned into something else for the parking across the street from there, and the side, the crosswalk across there, it is, it is, anything we could do to be more creative.
For example, maybe we should ban left turns, there.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's, it's, and, and it's got that awkward right turn, left turn on North Montgomery.
Yeah, it's really awkward.
Is there, I agree, I mean, if there's other ways we can take care of that problem at the same time, it's worth looking at.
Yeah.
It's not gonna blow the cost out of the water.
You know, when you pull up to that Ojai Avenue, you've got a incoming lane, a left lane, a right lane, and a full pullover lane.
Saturday morning, it, it is a circus out there.
I have no...
People coming up on Creek Road, trying to make that left turn, they've never been in town before.
Well, do we need, because it goes onto Ojai Avenue, do we need Caltrans permission to kill a left turn there?
Sure.
Well, it's, it's our street, we own the street up to the crosswalk. So, as, once they're getting on, then we're allowed to do that?
Yeah.
Well, can we, can we...
Caltrans might think us.
Yeah, can we, can we have, are there two votes to put that on an agenda, is possible?
Well, won't we put that on a...
Well, let's make that decision, so then we can, can we declare an emergency on left turns? Can we, can, can we, can we get that on, so we, because we gotta make that decision before this can go to bid.
I think he actually has the authority of doing that without council action.
Is that true, Greg?
No, you could remove the left, I just want to caution that that's a pretty handy left turn, I want to say that for myself, in other words, you know, before you kill it, it's, most people know, it's, you're gonna have to wait, you gotta be patient, and oftentimes, traffic stops and waves you in, which is kind of the nice character.
You can drive over to Fox and use a light.
Well, timeout, though, let's also under, let's not, let's also think about that if you remove the left, now you've made it right, which puts you backing up traffic, making a left onto signal, making a left onto Matilah, and going down, you know, we're gonna put, I'm just trying to say, let's think this through.
Bottom line, we need to think through this a little better, okay?
And I'd ask you to repeat that, but I don't think you could either.
I think I'd make people go down and use Fox to turn left.
We, we aren't gonna be able to redesign, right now, the question is whether or not we go to bid, these are all compo-, are packaged subsets.
Yeah, I would like to go to bid without Division B and E, with some expansion in the streets that we discussed.
That'd be South Montgomery and the lower Libby parking lot, remove those elements.
Take those out of the bid package, or now, they're separate, they're separable a part of the bid package, they could be easily removed.
Right, and add White Oak Circle.
The, yeah, and the, yeah.
And the Drown and, and Red Hill.
That one, I think we can handle outside the contract, but if we can incorporate it, well, here we will.
So that's, I'm gonna make that a motion.
And then the other, well, I just wanted to add one other thing, you're, obviously you're gonna bid this, and going back to what the mayor said, and any additional street that you see, if the funding's there, do put that in the package also.
I'm sorry.
We have one point four, we have one point...
That's the priority list.
Four, I'm just trying to say, if, if this is...
Well, it needs to come back to us.
Streets, right.
If we're not gonna spend the money on these, you know, certain components, could you move up whatever you have next in the queue, so we get as much pavement done as early as possible, for the best price?
I'm a little concerned that we're pushing the CIP heavily this year, you know, we're getting to the point now, where we use every bit of funds in the CIP, we used to have a little surplus, a little cushion left, and we're, we're, like, last year, we went over on Fund Thirty-One, so I'm concerned with that.
We'll leave it up to you.
Anyway, I, I'm not saying we need to use it all up, but I do think we need to take these two divisions out and look at some of these streets, that's gonna be my motion.
Right.
I have some other input I want to give you, you know, I, I don't want to, it's nine o'clock already, but I think we need to find weather days better, and so on and so forth, but I'll just do that.
Do we have a second to Bill's motion?
I have a question.
Is there, well, go ahead, let's see if there's a second, okay, we got a second, go ahead, Ryan.
Um, what, how would that affect the timeline on getting these two, getting South Montgomery and the parking lot done? I mean, if we kick the can down the road now, when are we going to be back with a, be able to review a new plan, and, is it still gonna be in this fiscal year? Well, I mean, I think there are certain advantages, Topa Topa Brewery will have that improvement completed somewhere in the next six to nine months.
Be done, and then...
So we can at least get a feel for that, because that's gonna squeeze the neck up there at the top of the street, that's, and deal with that as well. And then, it's really, next year, we've got the ATP demonstration project going on in the spring, it's gonna take a lot of effort, not to mention the whole ATP project, we just had an initial meeting today to move that, it takes a whole lot of work, so, and we've got a pile of other capital improvement projects as well, that we're working on, as, as well as miscellaneous other things, so these separate little projects take a lot of effort, ideally, we wait for two thousand, the next two-year cycle, two thousand, twenty-one.
Okay, so making this decision, and I, may be two-plus years before we get back to it.
Yes.
Possibly.
And, and I understand, but I mean, but that's why they're all packaged together, because you can get it all done now.
Efficiently.
If we wanted to try and look at these modifications, and still be able to get them all into this bid package, would we still have the time to even possibly consider that?
Yes.
Problem is, then you're looking at change orders, which are really expensive.
No, no, I'm not saying we get, we don't go to bid yet, I'm saying we make our modifications on these two segments that you're talking about, and then send it to bid.
We can actually, it'll be out to bid for, it was planned to come back, the first meeting, when council returns after the summer recess, so I think that date was August twenty-six or so, twenty-seventh, and, so, we have that period of time when it's out to bid, and it's, it's good to get the bid out and get interested contractors, and we can issue addendums, we can revise that page, for instance, we could...
That would also, that would put the paving of the streets even deeper into the rainy season.
Well, I'm saying we stay with the same award schedule, it's just that while it's out to bid, we reissue a revised page on possibly Montgomery Street, or lower Libby, if that was the wish of the council.
Well, my motion's gonna stand, I think we just should be, should not be in the bid package right now, it's gonna be...
Well, my only problem is, I don't want to wait two years, is there any way around us?
You don't have to wait two years.
Well, yeah, but I mean, but I just asked our public works case, so it might be two years before we can get to it, that's, I mean, how do we, how do we avoid that, is there a way to, us to guarantee it won't take that long?
You could bid it separately, you could go out separate, it's...
It's up to us.
Quite a bit of extra administrative effort.
Right, so that was gonna be my next question, because I wanted to know the time and the stress on our staff first, but if we did do it, if we separated these two out from this project, and let's say we found the time to do it sooner than two years, is there gonna be a cost increase, because they're not all packaged together?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's gonna be cost and time, and the problem, these are so important, I mean, we gotta work on lower Libby, but I love your ideas.
You gotta have the right design.
And we do have the right design, but two years is a, I mean, is there, what can we do to fit that in?
There would be a cost...
Okay.
I think, I think there's one other thing, the CIP funds come in on an annual basis, what we do on streets is we combine them on a couple years, so let's say, we had six hundred thousand dollars come into CI, from TOT this year, we're gonna have, let's say, five or six hundred thousand dollars next year, so you could possibly put this out to bid next year, using that CIP money, and get that done sooner than waiting for the two-year program, that's, there, there's lots of ways of finding funding for this, through the CIP system.
Well, let's ask the guy who's gotta do it.
But he's the one who just...
Is there lots of ways to do this?
Well, I mean, I think what we're saying is, yeah, we do is a separate bid, and it takes quite a bit of extra administrative effort, and it has a certain cost effect, because when a guy lumps it all together as a contractor...
You're saying it can be done, it's just not, it's not ideal.
It's more efficient as a contractor, so to have it come up and do a separate job like this, is you're generally gonna see a considerable price increase.
So what is the problem by bidding it now, getting the price, and we, that gives us another, when's, when do the bids come in?
Well, the bids come in, and I got it on the, the construction award, would be on, opening is August thirteenth, so we'd have until the thirteenth to revise, not, you don't want to push it that late, right?
That's really, really tight, I don't think that's realistic, there's another issue, too, if we decide to say no, then there's an elimination clause, where they could actually charge us for the elimination of something that's in the bid package.
Right, we can, we, we actually call these out for elimination, but it's preferable not to make major portions of the work eliminated.
No, but it's in, it's in the bid specs, that you can, they can ask for elimination compensation.
What, if we separate them out into next year, these two projects, how much additional cost than what's budgeted is the whole thing right now?
I would estimate that you're gonna pay twenty percent extra.
Yeah, and that's, and how much is that in real dollars on this part of the project, which is...
About twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand?
Mm-hmm.
And after the budget.
I just, I just, they gotta have the design right, so I'm gonna, my motion stands.
Okay, well, your motion's still here, we're just, we're just gonna get to voting out of here in a second.
I want to point out, as we mentioned, in support of that, you know, delaying it, the Topa Topa curb extension, there is an advantage to get accustomed to that, to squeeze on that corner, right, you're gonna, we don't have many trucks, but Watchers gets a few bigger trucks, and then a few of the restaurants get these Giordano bobtails.
Can you imagine, for them going on at the same time?
Well, let me ask you this, what if we figured out the parking lot, which is not gonna be the end-of-the-world difficult to figure out, but we postpone the, the South Montgomery part?
How about if you did these as add alternates, rather than base bid?
Well, I think, we have it labeled...
Well, I think, we have it labeled as base bid deductive, so you can deduct it, and.
If you did add alternate, then they can't charge you an elimination fee.
Right, and we, the contractors work with that, I mean, they can say, we don't want the job, well, they can go to battle on it, we wouldn't go to battle, we would say, we recommend rebidding and delaying it, but most contractors will say, it's pretty clear here, and we'll even clarify that there's a good chance it's supposed to be possibly revised or narrow or eliminated, those two items in particular.
You could put that in the base bid language?
Yes.
All right, well, then let's see if we can.
But if you make it as an alternate, then in the base bid, with an alternate, there's no incentive to keep that number low, often times have a huge number.
Let me follow up on one thing you were asking, when Ryan was asking you about the, in real dollars, you said twenty percent and about twenty thousand dollars additional cost doing it separately.
Right.
And what is the possibility that if the brewery takes care of all layers, and then we would have a different, different solution, could that be a possible savings?
Yes, if you decided.
It's a minimal difference, I think, for the flexibility.
Right, if there was a concern there, and that's an approximate number, it depends on the contractor, but yeah, there is a concern that if, if you wanted to narrow the curb extension, there'd be less work, and it might save something in that increment as well.
Well, Bill, based on your motion, is there a way for us to include that language in the contract, get a bid with that, being able to be taken out without it costing us any money, so at least there's an opportunity to try and do this before we have a, too late in the game, or is that not a good idea?
We can have legally binding language that doesn't give them an opening for elimination fees from the bid, if they, you know, I don't want them to be, say, well, we put all this time into this, as long as you have the proper disclaimers, that this, these two divisions could be either revised or eliminated, would that protect us from an elimination fee?
It should, if we.
The language is right.
If we structured the language correctly to identify the base bid plus two possibly deducted items, that should be able to knock out elimination claims.
Okay. Because I'm willing, I'm willing for what it's worth on my end, I don't know how much it matters what I do, but I'm happy to try and work with anybody to try and get this done under this cycle rather than wait two years and then jam up Public Works on it, that's the only reason why. But of course, if it's no, and we don't get something done, or we don't get a design that looks right, if we can get out for free still, then I think it's worth taking the chance.
And if we can get out for free, that, I read the bid spec in it, and, you know, I saw the elimination fees, but if we can get out for free, because I think that design issues are much more pronounced on that South Montgomery reduction by up two car width issues, not so pronounced here, but that would give us time to discuss and.
Well, I just wanted, Mayor, just one last comment regarding that, what we're saying is that design is poor.
Yes.
So they're gonna bid off of the design that's in this package, that's why it's really not relevant to let them bid on that, because it's gonna be changed.
That was kind of my thinking.
And we wanna, we wanna change it based on having more input and a better study of that area, that's, that's, that's what I'm looking at.
But are you saying that there's sort of like no chance that we would award it anyway because of the design?
Right.
Okay, well, that's a difference.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if it's a revision, if it's a narrowing, for instance, curb extension, but the, the schedule on that item is broken out by curb, gutter, sidewalk, and asphalt removal and so on, so they're all quantity items, so if we decrease the items or modify them, it's, you know, likely that we'd have a locked-in price based on existing bid quantities, you know, if we, even if we revise it after the award, so in that respect, you're not open to being gouged by a contractor. So, but, and you could, but, but if you've got just significant reservations on the whole design, I know it's significant change out there, it might give us, you know, longer time to really just brainstorm about other rough ideas and how to handle it.
I'd have no problem even doing that, they get, you're, you're, we're talking about modifying one of the main arteries coming in to our community. This is not, you know, this is not an easy, simple thing, and so again, this is one of those things that should take time, where you almost wanna set some bales out, you almost wanna show what you're gonna do to that space, because we're taking a really wide street that's very accessible, and we're gonna narrow it down and make it less accessible, or we're gonna make parking on it even more difficult. We may not be removing parking stalls, but we are gonna be making parking more difficult.
And we're gonna be pushing a driveway out two car widths into the main, into the existing street.
Keep in mind, the major advantage of that is, when you're on the sidewalk now, besides the exaggerated cross slope of the tree area and so on, when you come up to the areas where every driveway is, there's a significant off slope to.
But you can also.
So the idea is you stay flat, and you put that.
Push the driveway.
Approach out into the curb extension.
You could push, you could have the flat with an angle of attack and push it in too, it doesn't have to be pushed out.
There's, yeah, there's definitely a few ways to skin it, right?
Anyway, so are we gonna, I'll amend my motion that we approve this with the disclaimer language added, I'm okay with that.
Okay, does that address what you're?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, it absolutely does, the only thing I worry about is then if we do come up with a redesign fast enough, can we, I guess then we throw it at them and see how much it, the cost, the change is to increase, then we decide whether we kill the thing, or we.
It's not usually the right, most cost-effective way to do things.
Well, at least when the doors open, that if we figure out soon enough, we don't wait two years, we might be able to get it in this cycle, maybe we save the twenty grand.
And as long as we have the option of just saying no.
Yeah.
Without costing the city, I'm okay with that disclaimer language, and we tell them to go ahead and put it out to bid.
Okay, do you have a clear understanding of what this all?
I think so, I think that really, I mean, I think we can, even, we've done this before, you might recall, we awarded the contract including an addendum, an immediately, an addendum of change order that modified pricing on the contract, so it was really, the contractor was agreeing to be, award the contract, we weren't gonna give him notice to proceed until they signed a change order right off the bat, that's essentially what we're doing, you're gonna award the contract, here's your change order, number one is to eliminate this piece of work, and we agree on the price, and then you can proceed.
Okay.
If you had a really difficult contractor, they might not agree, but in general.
Well, and we could structure, perhaps, a better way to defend the city, we could structure that approach, not through an agreement, then a change order, but just all baked into the agreement, because the bid package is, is a combination of things they're bidding on, not, not a single entity, so I would suggest that if that's the route taken, perhaps we structure it the other way.
Okay, so the city attorney works for the city manager and the public works director to accomplish what has been suggested here, everybody, okay, ready for a vote?
The political, the political indecision clause.
Fifty percent, we gotta.
I'm sorry, we're not saving any money anymore, so that would not eliminate White Oak and even the sidewalk work, because we're back to full budget, we're pushing full budget.
Well, unless we eliminate them.
No, I would still bid them.
Well.
Again, it's pretty complicated, we sort of have to pick our priorities here, yeah. I mean, I think that the, paying two years out, you know, that street, I don't think anybody's gonna drop in a sinkhole or anything, it's just a rough surface out there.
I, I, you know.
I personally would suggest that you hold off on the White Oak, we can work on the, within our existing budgets to fix the sidewalk area out there, we'll take a look at that, and that way, we've got a little cushion here, and we can focus on trying to get, we're talking about the Lower Libby as well, we're talking.
Yeah, and then we could come back in the midterm, or instead of the, every two years, if it looks like it's practical, that.
If we figure out a design and go ahead and try to fix that.
But we're clear, we're not proceeding with those two divisions until council's okay with it.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so do we, we need a vote on this, don't, okay, clerk, please call the rule.
Mayor Potem Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
And Bill, thank you for bringing those up, those are really good points.
And Greg, thank you for your flexibility. Gotta go to yoga class, maintain that flexibility, that's good.
We changed almost nothing, we just sounded like we changed a lot.
Oh, yeah, we talked a lot.
We potentially changed a lot.
Set up some, some posts there.
Well, again, we.
Some decision, you know.
We started the conversation, we started the conversation one way, and we went a full three sixty, and came right back to, bid it all.
Okay, well, yeah. Oh, you wanna take another quick recess, we got two more things, you know.
Yeah, let's get going.
Go ahead.
It's okay.
No, go.
Okay.
Okay, we'll take a short recess before we get to the next. We're, we're back in session, okay, James? Hit it.
We put together just kind of a short presentation, because hedges, fences, walls is such a large issue, and, you know, we could.
With no one in, no one here tonight to debate this.
Yeah, I'm surprised, but.
Well, there's four walls, I mean.
But we, you know, we could, we could open this up and make it as broad as we want to be, but what I tried to do was, we took it to Planning Commission, Planning Commission made specific recommendations, so what we kind of did, we just wanted to kind of go over what each recommendation that Planning Commission, the Planning Commission made was, and I think, kind of a good way to start it would be, you know, do we agree or disagree with those recommendations as we move forward? The first recommendation that the Planning Commission made was to enforce safety-related issues associated with fences, hedges, walls, or other impediments to visibility or mobility in a public right-of-way, and possibly develop regulations for these. So essentially, they're saying, identify the items that relate to visibility or mobility, so the picture, which I made sure not to use any pictures from within the city, because last time we got calls from residents who were upset that their pictures of their hedges or fences were in our presentation, so the picture shows.
Don't they call Google Earth?
Yeah, but, so the picture shows the hedge that goes into the, the right-of-way, so obviously, recommendation number one is to enforce safety-related issues associated with those things, and that's something both Planning Commission recommended and council's talked about in the past. And what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna go through quickly what the recommendations were, and then at the end, kind of summarize. So the second recommendation from Planning Commission was to eliminate the five-foot setback requirement for fences and walls that are three feet or less in height, so the picture to the right shows a little bit of an example, and they're not necessarily the, the perfect examples, but, you know, these three-foot fences in the front could be, would be able to be not set back five feet, and what the Planning Commission said was allow those to abut the sidewalk or public right-of-way. You could see the picture with the X through it, is a six-foot fence that was on the sidewalk from a city that caused controversy, but obviously, that is not what they're proposing, they're just proposing eliminating the setback for the three-foot fences. Recommendation three, allow fences or walls set back five feet or more from the property line to be up to four feet in height. This picture, I think that fence is actually a little bit taller, but it.
It's not four feet.
Yeah, it gives you an idea, I couldn't find one on short notice, but, you know, once you get five feet or further back, you'd be able to go up to four feet, is what the Planning Commission recommended, so that fence is a little taller.
May I ask a question going back?
Mm-hmm.
Because that would, that's my situation on North and Tourist Street. It's a three-feet fence, and, but the problem is that it doesn't keep my dogs out, and so consequently, and I don't have a backyard, so consequently, whenever I'm in the front yard, I'm always nervous that the dog's gonna jump the fence, it's gonna happen, and I'm not the only one in that position, so I would ask the council to consider doing the, changing that three feet to four feet, even in, you know, just as a consideration.
And to reiterate, this was the Planning Commission's recommendation?
Yeah, yeah.
But that we're running through, but obviously, council has the discretion to make any changes to that.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that while I think of it.
Forty-two inches wouldn't do it, has to go to forty-eight.
You mean, three and a half feet?
Yeah, most dogs can jump a four-foot fence.
Well, you know, every foot helps, and if I can't have five feet, at least four feet, you know, I mean, ideally, it would be, it would be five feet.
Negotiating.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't wanna do that, yeah, sorry, sorry.
But that's not a four-foot, that's.
Okay, let's, yeah, no more interruptions, the city manager is getting late.
So, again, not the greatest illustration, but five feet back or further could go up to four feet is what Planning Commission recommended. Then the, they also recommended, and this kind of relates to the item that was discussed earlier too, they recommended using the property zoning district provision for the setback rather than what the current setback is, which is the nearest point on the front property line of the parcel to the nearest point of the wall of the structure, and what that means in plain English right now is, the typical residential zone, residentially zoned property has a minimum twenty-foot setback, so the Planning Commission said, use that twenty-foot setback. The way that the code reads currently is that the setback is the nearest part of the house, you know, the, the primary residences we talked about, so if the house is forty feet back, that's the setback. So Planning Commission is saying, use that standard twenty-foot rather than the front of the, the house.
They're saying that every residential in the community has to setback twenty.
Twenty feet.
But the large lots don't, that doesn't make any difference.
So they were, the Planning Commission was okay with enclosing with a wall if the house was back more than to twenty feet?
You know, it's interesting, because.
That's what you're implying.
That's what that implies, they did have concerns with that, though, when the item that was discussed earlier came back to Planning Commission, so there was a little bit of a disconnect there.
Okay.
Are we talking of two different things here? I would think that the line of sight would come from the corner of the right angle, you know, if you took, if you took two straight lines and came to a corner, then you went twenty-five feet each way and drew a diagonal line, which would give the line, which would give you the hypotenuse, which is the longest point between those two dots, am I correct? Isn't that the line of sight that we wanna create? I don't think this twenty-foot line means anything, I think you need.
No, I, I mean, do we wanna allow people to enclose, put a wall across the front of their house?
Well.
That's, that's, that's the issue.
Well, the issue here is the line of sight issue.
Oh, on the traffic visibility, yeah.
Well, and again.
Like, that's a separate thing.
Yeah, the image shows both, so let me go back, I just hit the wrong button.
But you're gonna show anyone at all?
I don't think I did, hopefully not, but, ah, this isn't working, but so the image, But so the image, what I was intending to show here is this front setback, which depending on how it's interpreted, could be either twenty feet or the front of the structure, basically, are the two options. But yes, you're mentioning that this all-
And clearly they weren't contemplating outbuildings as re-establishing the wall line guys, but in the code, that's the picture in the code. But we, we said it's okay, you know?
Well, the other thing to say too is if you did an addition and you-
Not me.
Creating that new addition now, now creates the new front of that property.
Right.
And you can't build within that prescribed setback anyway.
Right, so what some people are doing is putting the, the addition up to that twenty foot if their house is further back.
And that's, no one's had a problem with that.
Right. And then your old argument was before that you couldn't have a fence pass, a six-foot fence pass the corner of, of the front of the house. I remember you making that a long time in interpretation on that.
In terms of the traffic visibility area?
No, that's what I'm saying, that's why I'm saying there are two implications going on there.
Yeah.
Traffic visibility is on the bottom left-hand corner. This twenty-foot imaginary line is a setback line that now we're talking about. You can put a six-foot wall there.
What's contemplated there is that the front of the house, at least part of the front of the house be visible to the street. And that, that's the intent of the code. The current code, the intent, is the front of the house to be visible to the street.
Does it say that in the code anywhere?
Well, no, if you read the code, that's the intent.
Well, you know, you're interpreting the intent.
It's because the fence has to be equal with the frontage of the house?
If it, if it's, you're maximizing, if you're maximizing the height that you can have in front of your house, I think it's a clear implication, the intent is to, and look at the picture, is to be able to see the front of the house, front of the street.
The other thing that comes to mind is the gentleman that was on Park and Grand, that we had him take his fence down. We told him that he can only put a six-foot fence on the park side of his lot that you can only take it to the front of the existing building.
That's the current code.
That's the current code. So what I'm hearing is now we want to take the frontage and go back twenty-one feet, and that gentleman could have added additional six-foot fence on the park.
That's what the Planning Commission- That's what the Planning Commission recommended.
I don't agree with the Planning Commission recommendation, but that's what they're recommending.
Okay, right.
I, I think the principle of seeing the, being a front porch city is important for the character of the community, really, it's essential. We, we don't want to be a walled-in, enclosed city.
Is there some reason that the Planning Commission felt that that was not in contradiction with the idea of the, whatever Bill just said?
I was re-watching the video earlier, the one thing I thought they, I think they said about it is just the clarity that if you're in this zone, this is your setback, twenty feet, you know, for an R1-zoned property versus currently it's, you're in this zone, but where's your house? Because that-
Well, see, they're confusing different, two different parts of the code.
Yeah.
The front setback for construction is not what front setback is in this part of the code.
Right.
So they're applying the construction setback rule for this fences and hedges aspect in two different parts of the code.
Well, I think what they're trying to do is to eliminate-
Yeah.
-that contradiction and say, if the front of the house or the front of the structure's twenty-one feet, then we're gonna make the wall twenty-one feet also. That's what they're saying.
Yeah, it, it's basically saying it's okay to enclose if you're far enough back. I disagree with that.
And I, and to be honest with you guys, I thought we were looking at this drawing from the, the highlight to me on this drawing is-
Yes.
Is the corner.
Yeah, me too.
Twenty-five, 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 thirty-five, or forty, whatever it is.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I thought this was on, I didn't even, I wouldn't even look at the dotted line.
Yeah, that's my mistake. We, we grabbed it from the zoning portion that relates to the setbacks, but it shows a couple different things on there.
This is, this is the second recommendation though, isn't it?
Uh, it's fourth or fifth, I think.
Oh, is it?
It's the, we've gone through quite a few.
Did we go through all the others?
Yeah, yeah, we've gone through the first couple, we have a couple more. One is to require a five-foot minimum front yard setback for hedges to prevent obstructions. You can see a picture here in-
Right, that's-
Not from Ojai actually, but the hedge growing out into the sidewalk.
That actually looks pretty good compared to what we have in town.
Yeah.
You can use the sidewalk.
I don't think Randy likes it.
So the Planning Commission recommended a five-foot minimum for the hedges. The, kind of the second part of that though is they also, and it might be on the next one, yeah, they also eliminated, or recommended eliminating the three-foot height limit for hedges in the front yards.
Well, that's, that's consistent with the philosophy of allowing enclosures, enclosing the, enclosing the front of the house, cutting off the line of sight from the street to the front of the house. So both of those are consistent with that, and I philosophically deeply object to that.
Can we get, are those?
I think the immediate question that it raises for me is, okay, so if we eliminate the three-foot height limit, what would the height limit be, or would there be one? The Planning Commission didn't speak to that, they just said eliminate the three-
Philosophically, it's the same of allowing a wall.
Let's hold the philosophical till he gets through the presentation.
Yeah, I have my own philosophical comment.
Yeah, well, I think we all do, let's let the city manager finish the presentation.
And then I think this is the last one, and again, just a sample illustration, don't pay too much attention to it, but it's there to show that other cities have done this, which is establish a minimal or no-fee permit process requiring city review of all fences and walls in the, in the front setback area or adjacent to the public right-of-ways. And that would be used to document what was actually approved. We've had a couple of fences recently, I think one was talked about earlier today, where they said, we came to the counter and they told us we could do this, but there's-
Nothing.
There's a disconnect between what they were told they could do or what they understand that they could do because nothing was documented.
They permit everything, then there's a record.
Mm-hmm, and it could be a minimal or no-cost permit, and that, I think that's actually a pretty good idea, it was raised prior, I think by council prior to this going to Planning Commission, but the Planning Commission recommended it as well. And so I think those are all of them, the slide just shows all seven, which are also listed in your, in the staff report before you, and so the question now would be which of these would council like to proceed with.
Okay, does the council wish tonight to deliberate over that or to continue this to our next meeting and give some more thought to the various recommendations, or do we have some of the recommendations that we're all in agreement on right away?
Are we all in agreement on, on moving forward on permitting offenses and hedges, offenses and walls?
Respect me if you want, we can just take them one at a time.
Okay, let's do it. Okay, let's do it.
I want to make a comment though before we deliberate on it, just a one second.
Just a second, Ryan, go.
We, we have no members of the public here, and the last time this came up in 2015, this place was packed, they declared an emergency because of how many people were here, and if anybody in this room thinks that everybody who is interested in this topic is here tonight, that is absolutely-
I have, I'm not operating under that illusion.
Okay, I agree with you, I think that it-
So what's the illusion we're operating on?
Well, the agenda doesn't make it clear at all that we're making a decision on what's gonna happen with people's front yards tonight. And we had a moratorium that made it extra confusing on what the hell is going on.
Actually, we didn't have a moratorium, we suspended selective suspension of enforcement.
Well, actually, we didn't, but we had it on the agenda.
No, October of 2015.
Well, in 2015, we did.
No, that, that's the operational right now, we have a selective enforcement suspension. That is the current operational standard right now.
And I was just saying that on the agenda tonight, we had a moratorium which I think confused people about this particular issue.
It did confuse people. I got a call from someone asking if the special meeting was the only thing on the agenda, and that was someone who comes on.
That's all, I was just commenting, public has some confusion.
I had some inquiries too, for the same reason that people weren't sure what-
Why don't we go through and see what we agree on?
Yeah, I just-
But here's the other thing, if we read the recommendation here, guys, it says provide direction to staff regarding desire changes and possible enforcement. So that's what we're, that's what we're charged with tonight.
So let's go through the list.
So let's discuss it and see what we want to do there.
Want to go through the list?
Well, I'll make a comment before we go through the list, that, because it involves kind of the general idea of the way we're going through this. And it's philosophical in nature as well, like you were talking about before, that I just don't see us being able to appropriately make rules regarding these walls, hedges, and fences globally throughout the city when we have these different age neighborhoods that are so uniquely different, and they're kind of defined. You know, the Arbolata is so different than Golden West, and it's so different than, you know, the center of town, I consider Signal to Kenyatta to Summer and Ojai Avenue, and is significantly different than Persimmon Hill, for example.
And Sargent Town Planning did that, the taxonomy.
What about my neighborhood?
Your neighborhood's the same.
We paid a lot of money for a-
And of course, your neighborhood's completely different.
We paid a lot of money for a town planning exercise to identify those neighborhoods.
Right, but these rules are all blanket, for every neighborhood, these aren't separated on.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, my, my, I would prefer us to go through, because, look, I'll tell you, I live in the same part of town, you guys do, but my lot is so small, you, with the setback requirements from the front and the side, there is no backyard, so there's a front yard. So there's been hedges there since 1928. And those hedges, I don't know whether they'll get approved or not, but I can tell you that they're there because you can't barbecue and live in your backyard as your front yard if it's just a three-foot fence and you're out to the neighbors. It looks ridiculous to have your barbecue out there. I'll tell you, my barbecue's on the front yard because there's no backyard.
It looks like a tailgate party.
Well, it is, I mean, when I do it right, thank you.
No, I, I-
And only watching last season, actually, sir.
I like Randy's suggestion, let's look at what we can agree on now.
Well, I agree, but I, I agree on some of these in certain areas of the town, and I may not in others.
As soon as he gets a chance to speak, come on.
I passionately agree what Councilmember Ryan just pointed out, to me, that's really obvious. And a lot of what we're seeing is driven by increased traffic on the streets, okay? Now, just think for a minute, think for a minute of the three houses on the corner of Summer and/or Signal, they've recently been remodeled, they look very naked. What are those people gonna do that's legal? Let's think what they, what, that's a really good situation, okay? They have so much traffic. And the woman that came in tonight, she described, what she described was driven by traffic.
Well, part of the, argue, the justification from the special meeting.
You're someone for the stop.
Okay, but the problem with that, as soon as the problem with that is the, the, the consequence of that kind of thinking is we're gonna have an enclosure city.
That's correct, but the-
And I don't want an enclosure city.
That's why I want to increase-
Okay, come on, guys.
Wait a second, wait a second, it's not that simple.
Okay, I'll come back to you, let's, as soon as it finishes, and then we'll come to you.
I don't think it's that simple. That's another argument for making the town very pedestrian, bicycle-friendly, try to reduce the traffic. But you can't blame people when they have thousands of cars going past their house for wanting to, to have more, you know, thicker hedges and more plants.
They'll complain about the pedestrians and the bicycles.
I don't think so.
Ryan wants to weigh in.
I just want to say that-
At least we, I think we should understand that.
Ryan is gonna, come on, guys, we gotta-
I, I think that it is a complete fallacy to argue the slippery slope argument about where our city's gonna go by allowing this when it's already allowed and it hasn't happened. This, we're already saying that these rules are in place, we're not enforcing anything, and we are not an enclosure city.
That is not correct. For a decade or more, the staff, the staff did not enforce these rules, and they're not being enforced right now consistently.
That's what I just said. I agree, we're not enforcing these rules, and yet we did not become some crazy enclosure city.
We are, we are seeing more and more enclosure all the time.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for a motion and we'll, on something, so we can focus this conversation that keeps getting bigger and bigger, which it happened many times before in the history of the towns.
We agree on number one.
I'll make a motion that we should, we should review these at a later date with all of these rules being, with the staff coming back to us, with how these rules would apply into different neighborhoods that would be characterized in the city.
Well, that's, that's a pretty challenging.
I, I just, I just think we're getting into a real problems if you drive around town with, you know, an enclosure mentality spreading in the city.
And we've heard, we understand that, and I agree with you, Bill.
And can't we at least agree on number one now?
That's what, okay, can we have a motion on number one, and then we can talk about number one and get something done?
Because that, I, I can tell you, I don't agree with number one because I don't know what enforce safety-related issues means, because that is too vague, and I don't, does safety-related mean that corner that we saw that he had, that Randy was looking at on the previous slide? Does that mean that we don't have any exceptions to that in any situations, whether there's a four-way stop, a stoplight, or otherwise? I can't agree to that. If you want to talk about individual neighborhoods, I'd be happy to-
I'm gonna make a motion that we provide direction to staff to look at number one and number seven for proposals, for proposals to the council.
Why, why complicated by making it two things, what's the-
Well, one is the, is the safety-related issue.
Oh, I see, and the other's permits.
And the other is just having a permit for everything.
Okay, we have a motion for one and seven, or whatever it is, let's get a second, do we have a second?
I just want to make sure I'm clear on the motion, is that just, we're just, some staff looked into just those two more, is that right? Okay.
And I'll second that. I, I know that the Planning Commission, those were the two things it seemed like they got clear on before anything else, yeah. The safety, they, they, you know, that was a priority, the safety and permitting.
And your, your comment was is you need more information on how they would go about the enforcement.
But based on Bill's motion, anyway, what he's saying is the staff is gonna come back to us with that, so I'm okay with that. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that's-
Are you okay with that, James? Yeah, because I think there are some standards for site distance. If somebody wants to kill themselves by building a blind spot coming out of their driveway, it's kind of on them, but when you're at corners where people who are passing by have collisions because people have had these, you know, nine-foot hedges growing, that should be fairly easy to deal with.
Well, I, can I make this request for the staff? If, if there's any data, because we constantly have these situations, but we don't have any data to back up any actual accidents or anything that occurred, I know they may not all be police reports, but there's gotta be something. If we're, if we're talking about safety-related issues, it shouldn't be that we feel unsafe, it should be that there's data to support it, in my opinion. And then the other one is, please look at other issues regarding those areas where there's stop signs or other traffic measures or other things so that we don't blanket rule, all of those walls and other things where there may be other mitigating factors that don't make there be quite as intense a safety issue at that particular.
Okay, but I have a question about what you just said, may I ask a question?
Okay, ask your question.
When you say data-driven, are you talking, you're talking about the number of accidents?
Is there, is there an issue there, or have people been doing this for forty years and there's not been a problem?
And so the only reason is that I, you know, I personally may feel unsafe in some situation, but that doesn't mean it's a safety concern for everybody. And I don't, I, I don't agree with legislating based on just how I feel or something looks to me.
No, no, I, I-
I want to have more information, because I might not always be right.
I'm just saying, I'm just wondering, I just hope that you're not saying that just because there hasn't been an accident at a certain corner, that doesn't mean there's not a safety issue.
No, but I've never heard of a situation, I don't know of any data, it's not our packet about, for example, one of those corners causing an accident because there was a visibility problem due to a wall, or because of some failure to set back a wall that somebody backed out of their property and we're having this constant problem of people being endangered when that happens.
My motion was just a, we come back with a plan, so.
Well, she asked me a question, that's it, I agree. I'm on board with the motion.
I would like to be a part of this conversation.
Okay, Ryan, I mean, Randy, you're, you're up. Are you gonna give a benediction or something?
Two, two simple things here. First of all, when we look at facts, or let's see, before I get into that point, let's just talk about, what we're talking about is a minority of people, minority of people-
Your mic, is your mic off?
A minority of people in this community that are not abiding by the statute that's on the books, okay? It's the minority. So we're arguing that we're gonna let the minority, people who have not adhered to the three-foot fence height that we already have existing in our ordinance, that should be enforced. We're saying we're gonna let the minority rule, and we're gonna change everything that we've done so that we can accommodate that small group of people, that's one thought.
What did you say, make, your thought is, as you say, a minority of the people?
The minority of the people have these hedges that we're arguing about.
Only a minority of people have pools, Randy.
It's, it's the minority of people.
We still allow pools.
Well, let me finish my thought, and then you can, then you can have at me. The second part is, when we look at facts on accidents, and we look at the fact that we've had this rule in place for how many years, this three and a half, whether it's imaginary, whether it's factual, whether it's on the books or whether it's not, the fact that we've had that is why we don't have accidents, is because we've had the ability to see people pushing baby carriages, we've seen, we've had the ability to watch children on bikes, and we've had the ability to watch people walking on our sidewalks, because we've had that. Now, again, we're trying to rewrite this based on the minority of people that want to have a six-foot or twelve-foot or twenty-foot hedge in the front of their property. So I don't, I don't, I don't agree with us having, basing our discussion or argument on that, that's the minority of people. So I'm-
Was anybody even saying that? I don't know what you're talking about.
Ryan, I just want to say that we, we represent the minority of people too. And we represent minorities, we represent the minority of people, this is not about, you know, fifty-one percent getting to do what they want with their properties or not.
This has to do with the facts.
Right, but there's a minority of people that have pools, there's a minority of people that have lots of things on their property, and we protect their property right, because inalienable rights don't have minorities, they have the right to do it unless there is a greater public concern. And if you're saying there's a greater public concern, fine, but the accidents you're talking about, of course, I'm not asking for data on accidents where there's a three-foot fence, I'm saying that if there is a safety problem, where's the data on the six-foot fences that are blocking people and causing accidents, that's all. Are we talking about a real safety concern or a perceived safety concern? And you're absolutely right, it wouldn't happen at the three-foot fence, but if we saw the same number of accidents backing out of driveways on three-foot fences as we did six-foot fences, then we can't necessarily say that it's the size of the fence that's causing the safety problem. And, and my, and look, I, I completely understand that we shouldn't have a town overrun with the way things look, but the idea in Ojai that these are all cookie cutter, you know, tract homes, and we can make one rule that applies to everything, is, is really difficult because each neighborhood is so uniquely different. Nothing's like the Arbolata on the planet. on the planet. And it really, I don't think, the reason we've had all these problems and the lack of enforcement before, is I don't think the rules really were tailored to what Ojai is and what was right. And I think we're, it's difficult, but I think we've got to figure out a way to make it more tailored to the types of properties.
Okay, but that doesn't have anything to do with my motion.
So, so, so here, getting, getting back to this, again.
We're completely losing it. We're just totally losing it.
Randy's speaking.
I don't necessarily disagree with what Ryan's saying. I don't, but I do want to, but I do want to challenge the fact that, again, we're talking about a small group of houses that have these issues, and, and, you know, we were, James and I were talking to a citizen today. We met with a citizen about another complaint. You know what she asked for? She said, "Get rid of all of these what-ifs, 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 and get me down to something that I know I can go fine, and I can read, and I know what's right." And so now what I'm hearing is, "Let's create 15 different ways to have a hedge in my front yard. Let's create one way, and let's, let's make that the standard. And then if you want to create some type of a variance or a, something to that nature, then you can do that." But I'm...
We have a one-way standard right now.
This is why neighborhoods constantly have CCNRs, because they don't want to be treated like every other neighborhood, because they're uniquely different. And we can't enforce CC, we're not gonna create CCNRs for a neighborhood, but it's not unusual. And by the way, we have design standards for all kinds of different neighborhoods in Ojai already. It's not, we're not...
We vote on something simple.
Okay, the motion that is before us is the question of directing staff to look at safety-related issues and to require...
A plan for one and seven, to implement one and seven.
Well, we don't have any numbers on them, but...
One is the safety-related, and seven is establishing a permit for all walls.
Oh, I see, you're using that.
Oh, there's only six on ours. Did you guys throw one in up there?
Well, I'm looking at the slide.
Yeah, it's the, we only have seven dots on ours.
Okay, so we, those are the two issues that are before us. Now, the safety-related issues is different than aesthetics and judgment, and there are some pretty clear standards on site distance.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's such a thing as a blind corner.
Yeah.
And I think that if we all understand that that's the instruction we're giving to staff to look at that and come back to us, then...
And establishing a permitting for everything.
Right, yeah.
Do you have a second?
Mayor, can I, can we clarify that? The, one of the guidelines that they stated in here was the Santa Barbara standards. So, again, I did a lot of research this weekend on this. I got Santa Barbara, I got City of Oxnard, I got a ton of them here, and I reviewed a ton, and I didn't, I was getting tired of print and stuff. So when you look at safety issues, James, I think you need to look at our neighborhood in the county, and take a look, and maybe even talk to other planning directors or other managers, and find out what their safety concerns and safety issues are, so that we're coming back with a, with a lot of input regarding this.
Okay, well...
Do we need a vote, or are we good?
Yeah, I think, should we have a vote? Yes, let's have a vote. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wierich?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Now, what are we gonna do with the other ones?
My recommendation is we continue the matter, because as Ryan has pointed out, we have nobody in the audience, and this is...
And we continue to a time certain.
Sure, if you want to make them...
Been kicking this ball down the road. We, I'd really like to continue to a time certain, if we could.
Okay, well, what kind of a time certain are we talking about?
We need to ask the city manager.
The first meeting in September, maybe?
Do you want to do the same on the report?
And that's what I was gonna ask, is, because I'm, if it's with the request to come back with the reports on one and the new permit process on seven as well, it will require some time, but we can bring the other items back, you know, at the next meeting, if that's what's desired.
Either that or the first one in September.
You mean, looking at two through six? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, correct.
I think that's what we're talking about, yeah.
So we're just continuing those to a time certain?
Yeah.
And the time certain, should we say September? Because who knows?
When people are back, when people are back.
First meeting in September, school's back.
Yeah, yeah, people will be more interested.
Okay, we all agree to that.
Bring it back first in September.
Yeah, and, you know, I'm surprised, though, we didn't add number two, because there really wasn't, you know, the thing on number two was bringing the fences that allowed you to bring them to the back of the sidewalks.
Make a motion.
Okay, well, you want to make a motion on it?
Yeah, would, can we, can we amend?
Make a motion.
To add number two to that list of the one, one, two, and seven?
I'll second that.
Okay, we've already done, okay.
Yes, let's vote to say.
Wait, would you be open to amending that, that our four feet or less in height?
You should take what you can get.
Let's get, let's just get this one for now.
Why? How will I ever change that?
Because we're gonna be talking in September about it.
I thought you were making a motion for us to adopt that.
Nothing can be adopted tonight. Let me ask you this, hold on. This, Suzie brings up an interesting point, kind of.
The five-foot setback I'm fine with.
What if you build a three, what if you build a three-foot fence and you're setback right now, and we change the rules again? Or is it grandfathered in, or do you have to...
Anything built that's compliant with the code at the time it is built, key phrase, compliant with the code at the time it is built, becomes legal non-conforming if the code is later changed.
And that's true for all of these, because, so if, depending on when some of these walls...
Ask the maker of the motion to amend his motion.
Well, someone, depending on when some, in some of the, so in some of these properties, even if this exists that we were looking at, if their situation is before, before 2015, before...
It's two triggers. One, it has to have been built with permits in compliance with the code at the time it was built.
Right, but a lot of these were fences with no permit requirements.
Then it would be a set, if it didn't require a permit at the time it was built, which is true for certain fences or hedges, that you don't need a permit to plant a hedge, then the test is whether it's compliant, whether it was compliant with the code at the time. In other words, the code, even if you don't need a permit, the code, at least since the zoning code was adopted in the mid-'50s, has set height standards that could be enforced.
On these issues that we're talking about, when's the grandfathering-in date? I mean, we had two, 2015.
It's gonna depend on the exact issue.
But we don't know when the original codes were?
Well, the zoning code was adopted in the mid-'50s. It's been modified a number of times since. It's gonna depend on when the wall was installed.
So what Suzie is, so what Suzie is, I'm hearing, is asking on number two, eliminate the five-foot setback requirement, which is what I'm saying, for fences and walls that are three feet or less in height. And Suzie, I think, would like to go to four feet, and I would like to see if she would go with 42 inches, and I'd be in agreement with that.
And I wouldn't be in agreement with combining the two right now. I think what we ought to do is eliminate the setback, so someone could put a three-foot fence on their property line, and when we bring the rest of the stuff back, then we can start talking about height.
We're just doing half of two?
Yes.
All of two.
No.
All of two, but we're gonna still be discussing the height later.
Yeah, it's all of two as it now stands. You can change the height later.
Right.
Somebody, if everybody agrees.
We can do that, Susan.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking about all the people that have animals, you know.
I know, that is a separate issue, though.
If you put it in now, you might be able to raise it another foot later, but you might not.
All right.
What?
Yeah, if we change. So, so, so let's do it this way. You're asking me to amend it, and no, what I'm gonna say is no. So we're gonna accept number two as written on the motion.
We'll vote on your motion.
I'm not understanding why you can't, why it has to be amended later. What's the point of voting for it if, if you're, I don't, I don't understand.
Hold on, I want to say something, too. We, I thought we were asking the staff to bring this back on these. We weren't passing new regulations. This would change the current regulation, right? That's a substantive...
No, 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 nothing can be done tonight to change the regulations in the zoning code. That has to be done by ordinance at a public hearing.
So any of these changes would have to come back at a future meeting?
The ordinance change.
Yeah.
Does that make sense, Suzie?
Two and seven.
Yeah.
What are you, I'm sorry.
Let me restate, I think. What the planning commission has asked, or recommended, the council and staff has asked for deliberation on, is broad policy direction to be given to staff to draft an ordinance with specific code language, to come back to the council for consideration in a public hearing, and then adoption at two meetings, introduction and adoption, which would actually change the code. So what we're looking for is direction on what we should be drafting, and what we should be putting in a specific code.
So what we're doing here tonight is simply giving kind of a straw vote on three of the seven, and then there will, we can't have you drafting a code until we get, deal with the other issues.
Right, and the nice thing about two is, it's less restrictive. Number two is less restrictive. It's not more restrictive. So all it does is it gives, in the interim, it gives some certainty, at least once it passes, that you can go to the property line up to three feet. That you can't currently do, so we, I think...
But hundreds and hundreds of people have done it.
I know, I know, but, but that's, but, but I think the certainty of doing that, since it's, it only broadens what you can do under the current code, is a positive.
So...
So let's vote on it.
Yeah, okay. Would you call, the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Francina?
Yes, with the understanding that I don't believe in the three feet.
There are no signing statements.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
I'm sorry, yes.
And Councilmember Wierich?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to continue the balance of this, to...
So moved.
So moved.
First meeting in September.
Okay, if there's no objection to the first meeting in September, so ordered. That's number four.
I can hear those cans rumbling down the road already.
Okay, designate a voting delegate and alternate to the League California.
What's our timeline on taking up new items? Is it 10?
Yeah, 10:30.
Oh, it's 10:30, okay.
Yeah, let's see, we can be done by 10:30.
Sorry, for one second.
If we do this, I was trying to help.
Okay, do we have anybody who really desperately wants to be the voting delegate?
I can tell you that I actually really enjoyed attending this convention, and if nobody else wants to go, I'll...
Well, I think anybody on the council that may attend is just questioning whether you want to be the one that goes to the general assembly and vote.
Yeah, I enjoyed that.
You did?
I'd be voting, I'd offer to do it if no one else...
I can't go in, but I would really like to go. The League California says I do really want to go. I think that's, I heard it's much better in Skag, but I like Skag.
We only need one, we only need one rep, right?
But no, I don't.
Do we need an alternative? I'll be his al, I'll be the alternate.
Okay, we have, Bill is the voting delegate, and Randy is the backup, in case anything happens to Bill.
Okay.
Bill can't make it.
Okay, is there any objection to that? If not, okay, you guys are our voting representatives.
Thank you very much for doing this.
Yeah, thank you, and it is...
It actually was very educational.
Yeah, you know, all members of the council.
The League Conference is really good, isn't it?
Yeah, well, that's the main one, and the member, you know.
Yeah, except the typo that I found for Matt, that he's setting up the flagpole.
Yeah.
It almost cost me a county situation. All right.
Okay, we are now dealing with facilities use agreement and...
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I'm gonna make a motion that we continue this to a later date, since the main individual who is subject to this, Mr. Wile, is not here presently.
I second it.
Does that mean we're gonna be in a, the current status would be an every-two-weeks agreement with him?
I think the way we would approach it, the next meeting's on August 27th, so I think we'd approve his current request up through that date, through the end of August.
I want to make it clear, what that means is that he locks up use of the courts all day, every day, and then only pays for the time he decides he wants to use.
And I will...
Until August, until we get back to it.
And I will say, we had, we did have him submit a more specific usage, calendar of usage, so he has limited, or he has reduced his hours from prior.
All right, I feel better than about that.
I just, I'd just like to add this to this, to the part of the conversation. This isn't necessarily about Mr. Wile.
That's right.
This is about the use of our public tennis courts for any commercial...
By a private for a private entity.
So...
Yeah, I completely agree.
So that's all I would say on that. Having Mr. Wile here would be, obviously would be a good thing.
Well, Mr. Wile and anybody else in that similar category, the way this is worded, it sounds like there are others, but that was mentioned, and I think it's a courtesy to the person who was mentioned in the public report, that it's not great to have it come up at the last minute when they're in Europe or out of town. But nonetheless, I think part of the, we should continue it and ask the staff if they might give us a report that says how many people are in this category and that are doing business with us, because I found the email, without trying to be overly critical, but when people start making comments about communism, that I think needs to go back and study what that means. This is capitalism.
These tennis courts are a socialist entity, so...
Well, no, that's only if you give it away. When you're renting it to somebody, that's a leasing, and that's called, you know, return on investment. That's capitalism.
And I think that that's what, that's what the whole discussion centers around, is what is the proper leasing agreement for any future use of public facilities, and this is just one of them.
Correct.
We have an agreement with Sterling regarding the use of Libby Bowl for their concerts. We have, we have an MOU or an agreement with the music festival.
Correct.
Anything of this nature usually comes before council and council.
Well, we had a whole thing on fee structure, and this just happened to not be part of it, because it somehow was part of the recreation fees.
I think, if we're gonna continue, I, if staff communicates with any of the individuals, including Mr. Wile and the Wild Test Academy and anybody else who uses the courts, if there are any alternatives or creative ideas on how to handle this and maybe manage it either with technology or calendaring, so that maybe they're non-usage, or maybe there's a preferential usage, but that we're not completely, you know, locking the community out at times. I don't know if there's any other options, but we might be able to put that onus on Mr. Wile and the academy to make sure that we're, we know when he's using it, and that if he gives, if he doesn't give us notice in time, he doesn't pay for the hour, but then we can make it maybe available online somehow. You can, you know, maybe it wouldn't be hard where we can facilitate something that allows people to look online or other way to see what courts are available.
But still, let's be clear. To be able to reserve public space for first priority use is a conveyance of something in value, and to do that without getting any compensation returned is donation of public, public resources for private use without compensation.
Don't we get compensation for it?
No, not for the hours of reserved, no.
Well, yeah, I understand. Then, I mean, then we should figure out some way to make those available.
Right, I mean, it's not...
I'm just saying, before it comes back, if we could have some creativity thought through it, and maybe there's another way to do it, that's all.
Yeah, we'll work with them. The challenge with, with how it came up was, the application got turned in right at the end of June. This item got turned around very quickly. We didn't have a lot of time to communicate with them, but we have a new rec manager, which I'll be announcing later, and I'll ask her to work with him on creative options.
Thank you.
Or with other users as well.
Yeah, and the other issue, I really appreciate your doing a survey of what the going, the going rates are for this kind of...
And, and as part of that, if it requires us, you know, having a one-time fee or an annual fee or something that helps facilitate something online or some other way to access information, so when they're not being used under Wile, that the public has an easy way to know that they're not, so they're kind of semi-reserved, and maybe that's not the policy you want, but I wouldn't mind putting it on the applicant to say, "Hey, you want to use our courts, and you gotta pay for them," but maybe you gotta pony up a little bit so the public is aware when they are available, and I don't think that would cost too much to do.
Yeah, because it seems like things have, just by practice, have been turned on their head. This is, this is a public facility, and I believe there are state laws that apply to that when you restrict access of the public to be able to use what is a public facility for a private use, and it's, there can be partnerships, but it seems that it's not unreasonable to be examined.
And I've many times tried to use those courts and couldn't because of that. It is a real problem.
So along, along with this clarity, then I think that's all we're trying to achieve, is clarity, and if Mark is the only commercial user, we'll have clarity with him. But the other thing we need to do is, I think we need some clarity with the, with the tennis association, and we need, we need an MOU with them regarding what's their usage and what are their needs, and while we're doing this, let's just clean all of this up, so that everyone knows where everyone stands on the use of these, of the public facility.
Right.
It's important.
Yeah.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, so we are...
We're in agreement to continue it, I do, we probably don't need to vote for that.
Okay, and does the staff feel like they have enough guidance?
Yes.
Okay, great, so then, then we can bring it up when the people that are most affected by this have a chance to be in attendance. Okay.
We'll pick a pickleball night.
Okay. Yeah, okay, that's...
Was that a pun?
Councilmember reports. Randy, you have anything?
Yes, I do. I have a big announcement that Go Colts Transit is opening up their new center.
Oh, good.
Which is off of, I looked it up.
Behind Costco.
Yeah, well, that's the easiest way, but it's off of, the River Cutting is this Saturday. It's 11 o'clock, and it's, didn't, I didn't, oh, it's on, nope, I didn't write down the name, the street name, but we do know it's right behind Costco.
Yeah.
You can't miss it. You can't miss it.
Okay, Ryan?
Um, well, these are, I'll, I'll save my time for future agenda.
See, it's not mandatory, okay?
I never know, this is a hard categorization of these two.
I'll wait for future agenda.
Okay, well, thank you.
Future agenda.
All right, there we go.
Okay, great. City manager, you have any reports you want, you do have some announcements.
Yeah, just, I'd like to make one quick announcement, which is that the city has hired its new recreation manager, Renee Peace, and, um, we have some work for her already identified. She came from Rancho Simi District, and previously worked for the, I believe, the City of Santa Barbara and City of Los Angeles as well.
They have a lot of tennis courts, don't they?
They have a lot of tennis courts, they also just went through the pickleball process, so she'll bring her expertise to that as well, so, but we're looking forward to working with, with her in the future. The only other thing quickly was, we are planning to bring some of the tax options in, in the cannabis ballot language back at the August twenty-seventh meeting, and those are the two main items.
We'd be including the possibility of the cost of living adjustment for the library parcel tax on that?
So, yes, we're bringing that, the TOT, and the cannabis.
Okay.
Okay, and I'd like to express appreciation to our clerk for all the work that she's been doing, trying to keep up with this, and to our new city manager for the speed with which he's turned things around and the thoroughness.
There's somebody here now.
She's here to get you.
Somebody concerned about hedges and fences.
You're talking about hedges.
Okay, and future agenda items, I think we've already loaded him up with some, do